7:01 and the Waihewa Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board number 26 is called to order. Mahalo everyone for being here and Happy New Year, albeit a few weeks late into the new year, but we always wish everyone a Happy New Year and a happy, you know, looking forward to new things and exciting things. So on our agenda, we have, we are now at item three on the agenda for our first responder monthly reports. Can I call HPD, I'm sorry, HFD first please?
Good evening everyone, I'm firefighter Adam Sullivan from the Waihewa Fire Station here. Just quick stats for the month of December and a quick safety tip from the department. Here in Waihewa, we responded to one structure fire in December and 92 medical emergencies. And our fire safety tip is in regards to lithium ion batteries. So lithium ion batteries supply power to many different kinds of devices, including your smartphones, laptops, e-scooters, bikes, cigarettes, smoke alarms, toys, and even some cars. If not used correctly or if damaged, the batteries can catch fire or explode. So the big things are to always follow the manufacturer's instructions when using your battery. Only use the battery and charging cord designed for the device. Replace cords that are damaged, frayed, or sticky to the touch. Charge devices in a cool area with good ventilation. Do not keep charging the device or device battery after it's fully charged. E-scooters and e-bikes should only be charged outdoors. Smaller devices should be placed on a hard, non-flammable surface when charging. Never under your pillow, on your bed, or on a couch. And then store your batteries away from anything that can catch fire. That, that's everything. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions from the board? Yes, go ahead Dean.
Sure. I know several years ago you were probably still a baby, but they had talked about doing cross-training as EMS or MICTs with the firefighters. Has that taken place or you guys just get basic?
Um...
Shake you know.
Well, all, all the new firefighters for, I don't know when they started, but we're all trained as EMTs. So almost all, everyone in the department is trained as an EMT at a base level. And then, and yeah, and then we work hand in hand with our EMS partners.
Good, thank you.
We're medics as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from board members participating virtually? Any questions from the community here at the district park?
Teresa Chikoa.
Yes, go ahead.
Question. Have you folks responded, let's say in the last two months? Have you folks responded to any meth houses or had cause to call out the hazmat team? Yeah, as far as the 96786 zip code? Yeah, if you don't mind, let's, let's say from, I think from like December 1st till now. If you folks have responded to a meth house or meth houses, or if you know if the hazmat, the hazardous materials department of your division, yeah. Would they have been called out if there was a meth house? Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions, questions virtually for HFD? Okay, thank you very much. Before I go on to, oh, next is HPD, I'm so sorry, Honolulu Police Department, thank you.
Officer Brandt from the Waihewa Police Station. Safety tips first, we'll start off with that. A lot of vehicles are being broken into on base, yeah. Please keep your guys' keys locked away. We know a lot of people are actually leaving their keys in their vehicle. They're stealing them from the bases nowadays, yeah? So we suggest you guys just keep your keys on yourself, even if you're running into the house really quick. Do not leave your, your keys in your vehicle. Lock your doors when you guys are actually just running into the house. They're stealing a lot of stuff from you guys' vehicles also, huh? And we got a problem with older Kias. Anybody has an older Kia around here? They're using those because at one point Kia wasn't making an anti-lock system, huh? So what they're using them, they're stealing them right now and then breaking into businesses and these vape shops. As you can see, it's a really big thing right now. So if you have a Kia and older model, please always lock it up because that's the number one car being stolen right now, is the Kias, yeah? That'll be my safety tip for tonight. I know what we're doing with the avocado street. We're actually, actually, um, we've been riding our bicycles around, yeah? Me and a couple of other officers, and we do go down there and we do patrol that area. I can't kick them out, you know what I mean? I cannot just move them out. It is private property, yeah? That's something I can't do, but we can go and be naele, ask questions because I can walk inside, there's no door. We usually, when we show up, they'll leave. We do that maybe at least once a week when we have time to with the bicycles. Or even our patrol guys are actually going over there also. I tried contacting the owner and the owner's girlfriend multiple times. Nobody's returning my phone calls. So I guess DPP is actually starting to cite him and they're gonna go with that for now and see where that goes and try to get him to actually sell the property or start to clean it up. Any questions?
Thank, thank you, hold up. Board members first, thank you. But thank you for that, for giving us the update on that. Board member Dean.
As you brought up, the old Waihewa station, right across the street over here, Plum and Avoca, Plum in California.
The police station?
No, no, no.
Oh.
Right over here, right across the street, the old gas station.
The service station.
Yeah, the old service stations. As you see visibly, they're moving in over there now.
Yes.
Because the window has closed unfortunately. So have you folks, what I heard is that Leeward Community College purchased that property to be adjacent with the new...
Yes, I guess that's what they're gonna do, like for websites and stuff like that, yeah? For, um, upstart, uh, business, um, new entrepreneurs.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any way of contacting them to, you know, I'm a former PO, so we used to have the property owner there give us a general letter saying that if we find anybody unwanted on the property, we could trespass them based upon that letter. Do, does HPD still...
We're gonna have to actually talk to them first.
Yeah.
Because if they give them permission to stay there.
Yeah.
There's nothing I can do, you know?
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I can try contacting them and see what they're gonna do.
Okay, mahalos, thank you.
Actually, actually, and I can do that because LCC, the chancellor, is in, is in constant, frequent contact.
We can check on the...
And actually, he might, he might be participating because he does check in on the website too, so we can get information on that one.
Okay, mahalos.
Yeah, thank you everyone. Any other questions from board members here?
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Officer Brandt.
Yes ma'am.
Do you have any update on the situation on Rose Street? With, not only with the fights and stuff of the students and the dirt bikes.
We went with the bicycles also.
Thank you.
It's easier because we don't want them to see our blue cars, the blue lights, huh? So we go down there, every time we go there, there's nobody riding dirt bikes. We'll go in the morning and in the afternoon. I haven't seen anybody riding their bike. And we actually got off our bicycles. Let me speak ma'am, yeah? Because we actually did, yeah? And we actually talked to the neighbors and a lot of them said they didn't see it. If you can, do you call police when it? Yes. And do the policemen come?
Can?
Yes.
Can you go to the microphone though please?
Can.
Right, 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 right.
The microphone right here. And actually, if you don't mind, Officer Brandt.
Yes.
If you could go down there between 4:00 and 5:30.
Yes.
Because I, I also live near there and today I almost hit two of them.
Okay.
Because, yeah, they were coming up, so thank you.
We went in the morning and we actually went in the afternoon.
Yeah.
And talked to neighbors.
Okay, just so you know, it's seven days a week.
Okay.
After four, the kids are very disrespectful. I have gone nicely to talk to them. They say, "F you, try and catch us." "The police will not catch us." If I speed on the H2, I see the police officers on H2 every day hiding trying to catch people.
Yes.
Do the same on this street.
Okay.
These kids, wait a minute, I'm not done.
No.
Because, no, I'm not done.
Ma'am, you need to be respectful.
Okay, okay, but I'm upset. This has been going on for years.
I'm under local pride.
Okay, so, those kids are underage, they're speeding, they don't have a license, they have no right to be speeding on a road and popping a wheelie, and they're also going on California Avenue speeding and popping wheelies.
Yes.
So...
I've seen that also.
Okay, so my question is, why can't you hide on Rose Street and catch them?
Because they will run away from us. Okay, let's see if they do.
Okay, but I, I understand that. You can't, you can't chase them.
Yeah, Dean, Dean.
So once we start chasing them and they run away and they start running through Camp California and we're chasing them, we put everybody else in jeopardy. Now let's see if they bang into a pedestrian, a woman with her children, or into a car.
I, I understand.
You understand that, right?
I totally underst...
I'll let you talk some more.
So we have to suffer because of that?
Well, we can try to do what we can do ma'am.
I, I, and I...
Because we do set guys over there.
For that.
And I cannot chase the kids because if they die, who gets blamed for it?
I understand that, but you don't know that.
I know they know that.
That's exactly what the kids...
But then do we do that?
They can't catch me.
Which are probably great, it's hard to catch them. It actually is hard to catch them because they're on a dirt bike. If they die and they're only 12, 13, 14, and you may laugh at that and think that's funny.
No, I'm laughing. I knew you were gonna say that.
But it's the truth, that's why, ma'am.
I, I understand, but what's the solution?
Okay, so that, this is where, if you can, so we got your, we got your concern, right, obviously? So if you can have a seat so that we can have a...
We just want them...
We can have a...
Point of information.
Understood, understood, but everyone remember.
Point of information.
Wait, wait, we had a reminder here, yeah, hold on. So we, this is where we have dialogue, so you have to give us, give the officer or whoever is speaking to have a dialogue, you know? So you can't just, you know, go, I know it's, it gets, okay. And so I'm gonna share with you my story, which I've shared, which was last year, so it's not recent, but it had to be as harrowing if not worse because the four dirt bike riders, two on each, they rode alongside of me. So as I came into, on, I got off the exit, coming into Waihewa, they rode alongside of me all the way and I, so I, although, you know, I shouldn't, but I did it while I was driving, but I did dial 911 as I, but I didn't hold the phone. I just had it on, you know, on the chair and I'm yelling to HPD, I said, "I need help because I am being followed by four motorbike riders riding two on each side of me." That was harrowing because if I slowed down, they slowed down. If I picked up speed, so I understand, but I also understand because we brought it up at HP, at our neighborhood board meeting and we had people from local, we also have another board member that lives on, on Rose Street, very passionate about this issue. The thing is, we need to figure out how to do it safely for everyone, for your neighborhood, for your street, but also for HPD because of the duties they hold as responsibility, not only to the community, but to the children of the community. So we just, together, we need to figure out something, whether it's...
That I didn't know. That I didn't know. That's even worse if we chase them at night, yeah? Couldn't tell you right now ma'am, I really don't know.
So we'll have a dialogue, we will, no, so I'm gonna get your name before you leave, get your name and number and we'll talk and we'll figure something out.
Madam Chair, point of information.
You understand why we can't chase them because if they run up and down the street, it puts everybody, which they will. I promise you, yes, just like the guy with the gun shooting, we had to chase him and all the policemen got in trouble for chasing the guy with the AR-15. A guy with a gun, we can't even chase now. Okay.
Which is, yeah.
And do you want me to chase a guy with a dirt bike? These guys will get fired, will get fired. If they kill somebody, yes. You know what I mean? Yes, but they're not gonna listen. We'll just leave it there. Yes, yes.
Thank you for doing that, thank you, we appreciate, so hang around, we'll, I mean, it'll take, obviously, it won't be fast, but we can definitely...
You have any suggestions? Because we're open, if anybody can say something to suggest, yes.
But you guys need to go to the mic and you gotta say your name into the mic.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Dean, Dean, let, Dean.
Yes. No, 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 Madam Chair, I have a point of information, the board member needs to be recognized. Ma'am, could you please identify yourself because you gave no...
Liz McCarthy.
Liz McCarthy, thank you sir. And if you could identify yourself.
David Wong.
That's for the record.
Yeah, and I did ask.
David Wong.
And I'm, and I'm sorry.
Very appreciative of HPD.
Call him, I, the reason that we ask you folks to get on the mic is because we are taping this and it is gonna play on Olelo. So if you guys can go to the microphone, then our beloved camera guy over here can get everything because if you've listened to some of our meetings and for those of you who don't go on the microphone, we can't always hear what you say. So if you don't mind, because trust me, I live over there too. If you could just come up to the microphone and state your name and then say what you have to say, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so I hope, I hope I don't get in trouble with my wife at home. I'm a lot more proactive, I'm a teacher.
Yes.
So I spoke to two of my students the other day, dirt bikers, high school, and they know it's the middle school guys.
Yes.
They talk about the pitch. They're disrespectful.
Very.
The, the young ones disrespectful to the older bikers too. So the older bikers are trying, they throttle down slow, they're trying to be respectful. Proactive suggestions, we have traffic cams or ticketing people. We have traffic cams at stoplights now. Can we have a traffic cam on Rose?
Traffic cam makes sense.
Yeah.
But we gotta get the light.
Proactive response, we know who the students are. We have older bikers who can identify them, but we can take the pictures of them, their bikes.
That would be the best.
Right? So you, you have descriptions, so those, those would be the first two. But once again, thank you Officer and HPD for fully supportive of HPD, especially the guys on the line.
Thank you.
So if I can add, if I can just add to that. There was a gen, another officer at November's meeting and his, his approach was he went to talk to the parents.
That was me.
Oh, that was you, okay, I'm sorry.
Just so I can say that, I worked on the North Shore for five years before that was in Waikiki forever. I worked on the North Shore, so what I would do is, of course they're gonna run away from us. Eventually, all I gotta do is patrol and I'm gonna see where they turn into their house, huh? That's how I would catch them. I would actually go onto the, onto the property, knock on the door and let the parents know that guess what, I'm gonna start ticketing your kid and if so, I'm gonna confiscate the motorcycle, yeah? The dirt bike. Other places I would catch them was at the, the gas, the gas station. Off their bikes. Yes, in their own time, I'm gonna roll up right on them and then I'll approach them, let them know, tell them, call their parents and tell the parents drive out. That's what I would do, yeah? But that was me on the North Shore as a patrolman. I work with the community policing, I'm gonna have to tell the patrolmen out here to do the same thing. We're just gonna have to catch them when you see them at the gas stations or catch them when you see them going towards their home. Because we all, you know, we can finally find out where they really are, but North Shore is a little smaller community compared to Waihewa, yeah?
But that's, that's such a great opportunity.
So that's what, that's what, that's what I think from mine, because I had to control my dirt bike kids and at one point, I would just call them and they'd come over, I would tell them, you know, get home.
Yeah.
Don't be doing none of this right now.
Thank you.
That's the rapport we had with them after.
And I think we have, Erin has a question.
Hi, just, this is Erin. As like a small solution too, so having taught middle school and I know these students here, it's part of their culture, right? This is what they do after school, these are their activities, it's their identity. I even had a kid today say, "I hope I'm buried with my motorbike," you know? That's their ideal personality, right? That's what they project. And so maybe at the school level, at the middle school, some educational courses of like, this is the hazards. Like if you're not wearing a helmet, safety gear, these kind of things. I know as an educator, I'm like, let's do coursework, but the idea that, you know, we understand that the value, like you're stripping someone's phone away or their identity away. It's that strong of a thing for them, that their dirt bike is such a strong identity characteristic, that figuring out a way that we can have, provide a safe place for them to go, as you mentioned, the older bikers. I mean, there is, it is part of our recreation and there are safer ways to do it and not on the street and finding out those kind of avenues.
Can you, can you? Love for them to have a place to go. I'm not, I'm happy they're having fun, but not my neighborhood. Not doing it illegal. Aren't they on state property? Isn't it school property?
I think that's military property.
Pardon?
That's the military property.
Yeah, but isn't it illegal? It's all illegal.
Only if the military wants to do something about it.
Yeah, so that's where I'm having a hard time. If I'm gonna speed, if I'm doing wrong things, I'm gonna get a ticket.
Yes.
So why are these kids not learning responsibility and doing things in a responsible way? I think we're just giving them...
Blame the parents first.
Well, yes, but...
First they, they're gonna be the one to get...
I, I, I agree 100% and I am happy these kids are having fun, but they're doing it illegal. They have to learn to have legal fun. I can't do things illegal. Look, I pay taxes too, you know? It's like, come on, we can't sleep, we can't rest, the noise is that loud. You know? We have the helicopters at night, you can't sleep. You have those motorcycles in the afternoon, we can't rest. I mean, I'm a healthcare professional, I can't rest. Because it's noisy. I moved to Waihewa from Kailua. I am shocked at how noisy the country is. I'm shocked. I am literally shocked. It is so noisy and it's the motorcycles and the helicopters.
I can't do nothing about the helicopters, I can't do nothing about the helicopters.
I know, I know.
You're on your own, you're not supposed to shoot them down yourself, that's not me.
But you were there till what? I'm sharing with you.
The dirt bikes, I totally understand.
My neighbors, many are in their 90s and they asked me to speak up for them. Their community is being taken over, it's not okay.
Understood.
They thank me every time I call 911 about the motorcycles.
Okay, so I'm, because I see someone standing in the back, so to have her, and I do want to remind everyone it, two minutes at a time, please, so we can, but I, I know it's a hot thing, but we just, we do wanna get through our agenda, go ahead, if you can introduce yourself as well.
Aloha, my name is Teresa Ku'eju. I'm born and raised in Waihewa, I live in Launani Valley. I do sit on the neighborhood board, 35 for Launani Valley and Milani Mauka. I'm gonna say Waihewa is not an isolated point for motorbikes. I do wanna clarify, it is not cultural, it's just something folks do, has nothing to do with our culture. We have the problem right next to my daughter's private school, Honolulu, there are trails. There are trails in Pearl City, there are trails in Launani Valley. We're a little bit recessed from it, the noise and the issue. I don't recommend anyone follow these children. I have, because I'm from here, so guaranteed nine times out of 10, their parents are either my classmates or siblings of my classmates or they're at their grandma and grandpa's house, who are the parents of my classmates. I have followed because they have zoomed through stop signs and I just follow them around the corner, wait till they go home, I know where their houses are, I can see dad and mom outside, and I have stopped, Plum Street. I have friends that live on the backside and they also have motorbikes and everything else. And I had a conversation and I said, "Brother, I almost hit your keiki." Oh, he yanked them real fast. A lot of times the parents give them the leeway, we're in Waihewa, that's how we grew up. I rode motorbikes, I know, big girl bike, hunting, everything. A lot of times parents don't know it, but when we approach them, they're gonna handle their children, especially in Waihewa. I think a lot of it is the stress and the annoyance and the frustration, yeah, with the noise. And I don't wanna sound curt when I say it, but if it gets that much, maybe this is not where you should live. Coming to the table with suggestions helps. They wanna do a million things. If he didn't have that badge on, I'm sure he would. For me, I wanna do a lot of things too, which is why I don't run for office, because then if I run for office and I have a title, I can't do anything. Because then I'm held to a different standard. I think just getting to know our community and our people, I feel and I understand your frustration. I get videos at 11 o'clock at night, 1:00 in the morning, of helicopters flying over people's homes. I allow that because I am on the board. They fly and sit over my home, I get it. Unfortunately, there is a balance. If I don't like it, I gotta move, but I love where I live, so I'm gonna deal with it. I'm gonna address it in a calm manner. Please remember to fill out the little comment form so that they can have it on record and do a follow-up, that's important to document it. But I think it comes down to understanding that kids are gonna be kids. And I would hate for it to be where they chase them or did something and something happened. That's not what any of us want. Additionally, you kinda isolate and say, "We're just gonna watch your street" because then that becomes an issue, liability. You're in the, in the, in the schools and you see it, that's the best part. Take the photos, keep, keep a log, that's what I do with the military. Keep a log, take photos, and if you can get kids to tell you who they are, what families, that can go to him and it can be done with. It can be addressed immediately. They have a name, they have, we can figure out where they live. They can address it because that's really what it is. Until their parents know, they, they, they could be clueless and rightfully so, it's illegal. I don't let my kids run around nuts, but that's how we grew up here in Waihewa. Yeah, we kinda just did our own thing. I was reminding my kids, when he was eight, he was, he lived in Waikiki, they were on the city bus going to the beach. The frustration, I feel it, but it can't be directed at anyone here. That's for the parents to address and I think if we give all the information and it doesn't have to be at a meeting, reach out CPT, they have a little office right inside of the station, I visit it. They're more than happy to take the information and they'll follow up. I, I trust that group, they always follow up. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Teresa.
Did somebody say something about education with the schools?
Yeah, earlier.
Who said that? Okay, so we're actually doing that in Milani, the MTA. So there's a, yeah, somebody said it. So what we're doing from now on is, we're gonna give warnings the first couple of times, yeah, with the schools. And then, I don't wanna call it, we're gonna chase, but we're gonna start to enforce the law. We're gonna have to because, so then after we do that program, we're gonna work on with the middle school over here. We're gonna do it probably about the same time, we're gonna test try it at Milani and then bring it over to Waihewa.
What does MTA stand for?
The Milani...
Talent Association.
There you go. E-bikes, yes. And I think it's every community, not just Waihewa, I promise to God. Everybody has the same complaint about the dirt bikes. It's not the culture, but it's just a sport that kids do, their family did it, it went from generation to generation to generation. I rode dirt bikes when I was a little kid. I promised to God on the street. And I feel bad for any neighbors that I must have irritated because I live in Wailea, Waikeli and I hear them also, I promise. Like she said, have a badge, I have to, there's laws I have to abide by too myself, yeah? I can't just be chasing people and putting everybody's life in danger.
Yeah.
It's really scary.
I think we've done really good for this first discussion on this. I think this is, this could be a, a meeting of its own like we used to do, but I think we've kinda covered, at least touched the, getting an understanding of what your situation is, but we also have heard it from our own board member who lives on Rose Street, like I said. So we do have knowledge of it and, yes, go ahead.
Is it possible if you guys do know where they live, by all means, I will walk up to their house and knock on their door. Like this woman said, maybe the parents don't even know, they're acting a fool. You know what I mean? With their dirt bikes, they just being disrespectful. But the kids that I talked to on the North Shore, you're right, the parents did treat them up. And they showed more respect to the officers and more respect to the community once the parents knew, yeah? With them. Yeah, that's really dangerous also. Please call for something like that also, yeah?
Because my husband's a teacher, he taught at Leilehua. But I don't, I don't want my house getting broken into, I don't wanna, you know, I gotta worry about my house.
Yes.
And I don't want problems to come to my husband, but that's what happens. So for me, the whole issue is respect. Are we teaching our children to respect and to follow the rules? After I spoke to those kids, I really understood that they didn't have it. And, and, and trust me, I want them to have fun. I, I'm all about fun. But you gotta do it the right way and I think we're just giving them the wrong message.
That's society, that's not the police department.
No, it's not, but...
That's society, okay?
Yeah, but I will, I, I tell you truthfully, when my neighbors are afraid...
I live right there too ma'am, I know.
About my elders who are born and raised and are in their 90s and are afraid and they will not speak up.
Just, just keep calling 911, that's all we ask.
I know, but you just better things to do.
No we don't, no we don't. We're there for you guys, I promise. I promise, yeah? Waihewa is... Yeah, just please call, that's all we ask, because eventually one of them will fall, one of them gonna eat it and that's what we got them, yeah?
Go ahead sir, go ahead sir.
Come up to the microphone.
You can go to the mic.
I'll go, come up to the microphone.
Right here in the middle.
Hi, my name is Nolan Karioka. I also live on Rose Street. And I'm not trying to call you guys anything other than what you guys do all the time, I respect that. I've called HPD many times. I don't know if I spoke to you, I don't think I...
No, I wasn't...
But I've spoken to two other officers. And the sad part is, it's not you guys coming, our aid, it's not that. It's the fence that's right behind that area across from the school over there. They break it down, they go right in. That's the, that's what they like. They like to go back there in the back roads, do what they want to, nobody to bother them. They can even do what, do exactly what they wanna do. I mean, there's, there's no law. But there's also another problem because I used to walk along Leilehua High School and even in that area, I noticed the fence is broken too. Now, I don't know if they have the same problem with dirt bikes over there. But the sad part is, I'm a taxpayer too and it's, it's like, it's like the fence gets built, it's taken down. It gets built again, it's taken down. I'm not sure who is responsible for that. But if someday one of those kids should get hurt, who's gonna be... But if someday one of those kids should get hurt, who's gonna be liable?
So that fencing, if you're talking about behind the middle school.
Yes.
Yeah, so actually we have the milit-, that's the military property that fenced.
Yes, that's military property.
And in the past, this issue has come up, so we've worked with it, they've repaired it, and you're right, it gets knocked down again.
Mm-hmm.
It's like this repeat.
Yes.
Cycle, um.
That's constantly, that's gonna be the problem.
Yeah.
You have, you have the senior people that come and they try to, I guess, say something to their kids. I respect those guys, but they too, they're doing something illegal. They're going through that area and, and they're doing their thing. The sad part is, it affects everybody in the whole area. I'm not sure about people living right in that area, but I'm sure if I went to them and spoke to them, I'd be hearing my mouth full right now.
Yeah, and I agree, because when this issue came up, probably a couple of years back, you know, we reached out to the middle school as well, um, and, you know, they've.
Just a bunch of people.
Yeah, so, you know, we'll be in contact with the military again, maybe there's something if, um, maybe can arrange another site visit to see the condition of the fencing, even though it, maybe if it just has to be repeatedly repaired, maybe that's all we can do for now. At least it's a fix, if that helps, um, while we try to figure out an option.
Then, then you're gonna have the, the old people that go there with their trucks and they park their bikes on the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They like to go there. The funny guy's like tearing it apart.
But we cannot.
You know, you know, the sad part is it's occurring and it occurs often.
We'll try to contact with the military and try to work, where we can probably go inside there.
Yeah.
We'd have to just gear up and just go inside there with our ATVs and go talk to the kids, yeah. That's what we do. But we need, the military is.
They're, they're, they're the same kids.
Need their permission, we, I can't just go inside there and.
Exactly.
They're the same kids.
Pay down the law, cause that's not.
And so we'll work with, with our military partner here and that, you know, so we can arrange some kind of setup.
Where we can go with our dirt, they go with their dirt bikes, or I will go to ATVs.
Yeah.
And we'll go, not chase them, just go follow, talk story with them.
Yeah.
And tell them that it is trespassing, and then we can issue trespass warnings if the military wants us to. And then if they back there again, we go there again, we arrest, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you, Representative, okay, thank you. Representative, go ahead.
So I just wanted to add all of what you said.
Yes.
And the military representative is here and, um, but I also wanted to add, because it hasn't been part of this conversation, that, um, the new principal of the middle school, Sam Bennett, is, um, actually, they're in the process of getting big cattle guard gates to address exactly that kind of parking and partying situation with the motorbike. So it's gonna be a multi-strategy approach, um, it's gonna take all of those things. So I, I would encourage folks to continue to put pressure on, because that's the only way it's gonna happen.
But the new cattle gates are in the front, the entry to the school, larger cattle gates, or in the back area?
No, right at the, at front of the school, because that's where they're entering. There's already fencing all the way down, like right alongside those residences, Waihaua Middle School. And, and, you know, that's only a stopgap measure, right? Because there are multiple entry points. Um, but I do think that the military needs to manage their lands.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll make, put everybody in contact.
Again, can you please get on the microphone?
They're going to, I can just incorporate her question into my answer. So they don't lock, currently lock their parking lot during, um, non-school hours, but they are going to start. And that's why they're getting the cattle guard gates, so I, I hope that will be helpful.
Very good.
It won't answer the complete problem, but.
Okay, thank you, Representative. TJ, go ahead.
Actually, I just wanted to, um, I just wanted to say, cause I, they were, I mean, not that we're beating a dead horse, but we're beating a dead horse. But I have reached out to the prior military liaison when Captain Labowski was there. So I'm happy to continue, because I actually did facilitate a site visit out there, and I'm happy to do it again. And if I could again, I encourage everyone, number one, come to the mic and speak at the mic. And before you leave, if you haven't, there are half sheets of paper out there. If you could just give us your contact information, Chair can share it with whom, whatever speaker is there, so that they can reach out to you, because the best way for us to handle anything in our community is together as a group. And if you don't give us your name, or you don't give us some kind of contact information, we can't do it without you. So if you don't mind, if you could please, um, continue to come to the meetings, fill out the forms, and most of all, continue to have respect for each other and for the speakers that are here tonight. Cause, um, Officer Brett, we really do appreciate, I've lived over there since, since my kids were in, in middle school.
I can imagine.
So thank you so much.
No problem.
Thank you. Before you walk away, I do have one separate question.
Yes, 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 yes.
Not, not related to the, this is, this is a question that was emailed to me, so I, I am obligated to bring it up. But it's a good question. Um, the, the question, the resident wanted to know about the new bicyclist officers, because she sees.
So that is us, me, Officer Shane Munna, Officer Tim, and it's about four or five of us.
And so how does that, she wanted, like, when did that start? How does that work? What hours, I mean, are, are they?
We usually do it in the morning or in the afternoons. So that's why we went down in the morning, so look at the dirt bikers.
Yeah.
Nothing, we went a couple, a few times, nobody going in and out. We went in the afternoon, nothing, but we'll go through a certain time, we'll go there so they can't see the blue light. It just started with, trying to do something new.
Yeah.
Chinatown did it, um, I, when I worked in Waikiki years ago, I was on ATV and bicycle detail. It worked, they couldn't see us coming, we could sneak up on them.
Yeah.
The bicycle, I know, sneaky, I don't know bicycle, I know, we're not too sneaky, but it works, I'm telling you. They're not gonna see us coming, especially when riding the bike, they're putting their dirt bikes on the, on the, or they're not facing us. We can just ride up to people left and right and we can confront them about what's going on. That's why we take the bicycles.
You guys go in different areas of Waihaua, or pretty much you focus on certain areas?
Pocatillo Street. Rose Street, and then we go by the seven elevens where.
Yeah, where, you know, they got, customers.
Yeah, customers, customers, customers. Where customers are hanging out on the outside, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Where a lot of beer runs happen.
Okay, and Dean, and then.
Just a quick comment, sir. Can I let you bring back the horse detail? I'll sign back up.
Yeah, I don't know about the horse detail.
Only in Waihaua though.
I wish, yes.
Good luck. I've seen you guys, uh, I, I truly commend you guys, especially on the bikes, because you've stunned a lot of people when you guys are out there, just.
We had to try something new.
Yeah, yeah.
We can't ride the ATVs on the street, because it is illegal.
Well, I appreciate you guys bringing it up here, thank you.
And then Michelle, last question for you, officer.
Yes.
I recently learned, I didn't know this, that the amount of nine one one calls received in a particular station influences how many police officers you have assigned at that station. Is that?
No, I don't think that, I may be wrong, I don't think so. I think it's the population, the people, the population density. So I would always ask for more police officers on the North Shore, because we only have four policemen. There's another twenty thousand tourists come over the weekend, plus the residents are already there. I've always asked for more police, uh, police, uh, presence. It's just hard, because they're looking for the population of people living in the area, not the tourists. Cause all the tourists, they're not gonna stay in Waikiki, yeah. They go around the island, they like go see the turtles, eat the shrimp. They all come to the North Shore. So something we're gonna work on with something. I don't think it's on the cause, it's on the population. Yeah.
Okay, can we, everyone, can we give a random?
Sorry, I'm so sorry. Sorry for taking up your guys' time.
And those, those participating virtually, you really missed out. The great conversation, uh, yesterday. Not, not for the officer, we already excused him.
Ah, that's right.
We already, okay. Okay.
You know, when I looked at the libraries' schedule, I think you're gonna have Talk to the Cop next month, huh?
Yes, we just had one in, um, on the North Shore, if anybody wants.
Yeah, what date is it gonna be?
I wouldn't know, I would have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, but, but we get to the last one they had at the library, and it was really good, because we had two people, one that serves in Mililani, one that serves Waihaua. And there's more time to talk and discuss things than at the neighborhood board meeting. So I would encourage you folks to check with the library when that's gonna happen.
We have them at the McDonald's, we have them at the Starbucks, we have them at, what's that little place, the little coffee shop right down the street?
It was gonna be at the library.
Surf Nation One, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So we're everywhere. Just look on our website, it's gonna say when we have for District Two.
It's gonna be announced by the library.
Waihaua, it's gonna be on top of the website.
So, so anyway, it would be good to inform the community about that.
Uh, yeah, Honolulu.org, just go on the District Two, which is Waihaua, Mililani, and the North Shore. And it's gonna go over there and it's gonna tell you all, um, our events that's happening. Yes, HPD, Honolulu Police Department, yes, HonoluluP D dot org.
Okay. Yeah, what, the word, yeah, that, the follow-up you're talking about. Or you can just do, you can do it, you're, no, you can do it, you're a teacher.
I don't know.
I just wanted to comment that, um, I sent an email to Jeannie that, um, when I read the minutes to the last meeting, it did not reflect that I was present. Although I was present, I did sign in, but I don't know what happened to the clerks here that, you know, my name was missing. Also, did it not, it did not address the problem that I spoke about, which had to do with the fight that was at the park. I forget what date it was, but, uh, where the principal of, uh, Koala School was kind of injured. And, um, so anyway, I brought it up in front of the neighborhood board, I think if you were here, then I'd talk to you about it. And, um, apparently I, I ran into the principal the other day, and he said it's been calm, it hasn't happened again. And there seemed to be monitoring, someone is monitoring that area.
Is that the middle school?
The mi- middle school kids are in the fight, yeah.
Actually really good, he'll come out and walk out with the vice principals and make sure the kids are not fighting out there. And then if they do, they call police. We try to send an officer there now and there to just sit, but it's hard when Waihaua is blowing up and stuff, all kinds of things are going on. Milani needs help, the police officers from here go to Milani, officers need help in, um, the North Shore. Waihaua guys go down there, just cause they're in the middle, yeah, so.
But, you know, but I was kind of concerned, it was not mentioned in the minutes at all. And that is a community concern that should have been mentioned, that everyone should know about and cookua in trying to help, uh, the problem.
Okay, thank you, oh, yeah, go ahead. Add it to the minutes. Wait, hold on, yeah, yeah, can you, yeah.
Come on!
Uh, so yeah, to address any concerns with the minutes, uh, we do have, um, you might have seen multiple people in the last several months. We've been short-staffed, but now we have Rachel, who'll be your permanent neighborhood assistant. So if you have any issues, you can direct this straight to Rachel. But what we do is we do a draft for the board that, uh, complies with the law. But what we really like now is, we know that more people are gonna turn and watch the video. The videos now, we're gonna post it like tomorrow on YouTube, and the link, if it's not already on the agenda, I'll make sure it's on the next agenda, so you can save that on your web browser, your phone, anything, and you can watch the video. The video is the best record of the meeting, because you might say something, but I gotta summarize it.
Library. Go to the library. But Teresa, can, can we?
Well, I don't, yeah, I mean, there's other ways to do things, but always talk to us. Um, it's not a transcript, we gotta make that clear.
Yeah.
Sorry. I can't explain that, and I wasn't the guy to do it, I'm so sorry for that. I'm sorry about that. Uh, we can always edit the minutes, so now that you've set it to the board, they can approve it as amended.
When we do, when we're in board business, if we ever get to board business. Sorry, the Coffee with a Cop for Waihaua for D2 is March second, Saturday, from ten to twelve, at Waihaua Library. Thank you.
Please come, ask us any questions you want.
Okay.
Coffee's free, we'll answer all you guys' questions, I promise.
Okay, once more, Hanaho, and thank you to Officer.
Aloha, guys, have a good night, take care.
Okay, wow, that was very good. Thank you for the, the discussion, everyone. Uh, before we move on, I, I neglected to do our roll call, so we're gonna do that real quickly right now. Rachel, are you ready? Everybody announce with a I or whatnot, so President, TJ?
Present.
Joe? Not here. Dean?
Present.
Sylvia? Not here. Erin? Michelle? June? And myself. John and I. Okay, very good, thank you for letting us do that. Moving on to monthly reports, our federal military, if we can call you up, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, uh, board members, community members, thank you for having me. I'm Lieutenant Jordan Balzano, I'm gonna be filling in for Captain Blake Cox today. He's currently forward in Indonesia at a planning conference for some of our training going on this summer. Um, obviously there are some big issues to address, so firstly, before we do that, I'd like to, uh, give, inform you on how the issues that are brought up here make its way through our chain of command. What happens is I will take all of the, um, concerns that are brought up at this point, and they go up to our division at the highest level, and those are then put out to the subject matter experts to find the best solution for these problems. So we are making sure that your voices are heard, and it's important to us that these answers are, or these questions are being answered. Um, with that in mind, to address some of the larger issues first, with, um, helicopter training, or, sorry, correction, helicopter noise in the area. The flight path for the helicopters has been greatly adjusted to avoid housing areas. Our standard operating procedure is to not fly over housing unless weather or safety dictates it. We currently attempt to keep our helicopters over a thousand feet AGL. Um, however, weather and, um, training conditions sometimes require us to go below that. So our ultimate goal is safety, and our ultimate goal is to keep away from the housing. With that in mind, there are only three maneuver training areas that we can utilize when transporting ground troops on helicopters. One of those being south range, therefore dictating us to have to use those, um, air maneuver corridors, if you will. Um, therefore requiring us to move into south range. So, um, with that in mind, I, if you have community concerns, I highly recommend that you use our community concern number, which is eight oh eight, seven eight seven, one five two eight, and that's for any community concerns that you have. With that in mind, additionally, with the dirt bikers on east range, we of course sympathize with the community and this problem. It also becomes an issue once they get onto government property, as they interrupt training, they get in the way of our operations, and they make an ultimately unsafe environment for us as well. With that in mind, um, this is of course a historic issue that we are committed to help resolve. With that, um, sorry, the way that, uh, we currently have it set up is that if you first call HPD, they will be dispatched first, and then followed by our military police onto east range. With that in mind, if you do see dirt bikers, and especially if you see breaches in the fence, please feel free to call the HPD non-emergency number, I have that of course, which is eight oh eight, six two one, four four eight two. And additionally, with our community concern line, to notify us of any breaches or anyone moving onto government land. Again, that community concern line is eight oh eight, seven eight seven, one five two eight. This is a historic issue, and the Army is committed to solving this issue as best we can. Additionally, uh, some of the concerns that were raised for our Joint Pacific Multinational Training Center movement that we did in September of last year, there were a couple of concerns that were brought up, we'll just hit those really quickly. Uh, fire hazards on KTA, there are of course, uh, a handful of fires every year at KTA, however, they are kept small, as twenty-four hour firefighter coverage with army aircraft, firefighters, and engines are, are, are on-site whenever there are ongoing training operations. Roads that intersect KTA have often been used in the past to help burn off and contain fires. The Army utilizes the use of the Fire Danger Rating System to help reduce or exclude fire-producing training and munitions when the fire danger warrants. The Army also has supported Honolulu Fire Department with engines and aircraft in firefighting operations near KTA. With the concern of multiple small convoys with explosive placards causing traffic and congestion in the area. That was of course during the Joint Pacific Multinational Training, uh, Readiness Center rotation, which was from November first to tenth, and it is our largest training, uh, event that occurs on all of the, um, training areas on Oahu simultaneously. With that in mind, we are required to move between these, however, we are kept, um, the utmost safety during these times, and we use, um, several, sorry, very, several different safety measures when we are using this, including, uh, PPE, properly trained people, and of course, that we are integrating with our HPD partners whenever there is an issue. Uh, with that in mind, there is a February job fair in the US Army Garrison, and, uh, it's going to be on February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, at the Halemono Military Reservation Youth Center on HMR. And that begins at eight thirty AM and ends at two PM. It's open to the public, and there will be job offers and provisional hirings on the day of the job fair. Additionally, the January training advisory, excuse me. Sorry, case of the Mondays, um, as we move into January for training, there is a couple of training, uh, advisories we would like to put out. First off, with each range helicopter training, that will be on the twenty-third and twenty-fifth of January, however, that is the day only. Additionally, in east range, we also have blank fire training, excuse me, sorry, until the twenty-sixth of January, again, day only. And, uh, demolition training, again, day only on the twenty-seventh and twenty. If you would like to be added to the training, uh, advisory email, please email usag, U S A G, dot Hawaii, dot com rel, C O M R E L, at army dot mil, to get those updates right to your inbox. With that in mind, for some good stor-, some good news stories, we had a toy drive come out of Third Brigade, uh, for some of the local elementary schools. In addition, uh, we had Three Quarter Cab do Kaala Cares. In addition, we had 3/4 Cab do Ka'ala cares, where they did a ruck march with toys up to the local elementary school, excuse me, to deliver those toys to the children. With that, that's everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, board members. Any questions for our military?
I just had two questions.
So sorry, please.
No, it's okay. You need water.
I'm going to go grab my water. Thank you.
Okay, so while you're walking, can you tell us where is South Range? And then also, what does, what does, what does KTA stand for? Take your time. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, so, oh my gosh. Bless her, you'll have to excuse me. I just had one that I swallowed. So, South Range is our local training area here in Oahu. It's located at the end of California Avenue. At the top, yes. And then KTA is the Kahuku Training Area, and that is on the North Shore. That's our largest training area. That's where we hold a lot of our multinational parties.
So the traffic that you were talking about goes from like Schofield out to KTA?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Erin?
I have a question. I've been hearing about a lot of power outages on Schofield side. Like Solomon, I know Solomon Elementary were closed. What were those related to, if you know?
Yes, ma'am. So that was some wind damage that happened to some of the power lines. And I was fine sitting down. When we had some wind damage on banks through the last week's wind that came through the town, when that happened, one of our substations went down, and it took us around 28 to 48 hours to get that substation back online. However, at this time, power had been restored, and those families were issued proper compensation for that time.
And so in general, the military base is not on Hiko's electric. They have their own power grid. Is that correct?
I'm not sure, but I will make sure that answer.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin and Dean. Any other questions from the board here? Any questions from anyone virtually? And any questions back here at the district park? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, yes.
David Wong. First of all, appreciation to the military for our economy. My dad's an Air Force veteran. My nephew is a officer, is a Navy diver. I surf with several senior officers. So my relationship with the military is a positive one. All my comments are meant to not be offensive, but I do have a question. So growing up in Ever Beach, we had a naval air station at Barbers Point, a lot of aircraft breaking the sound barrier, lots of booms. My brother and I wrote to the military at that time. They changed their flight pattern, and they adjusted things considering the community. Good neighbor to Ever Beach. Growing up, I know that the military on the YNI coast, good neighbor, responsive to YNI, made adjustments, built relationships there. Conneewee Marine Corps, I don't hear a lot of complaints coming out of Conneewee and Kailua about noise. Seems like they're being a good neighbor. My request is, we have these role models in history here in Hawaii. How will, and this is the question, how will the Army be a better neighbor to address the concerns about noise versus saying things like, well, that's something you just got to live with in Oahu? To me, that's unacceptable. There are better solutions. We're in the 21st century. I'm pretty sure the military are smart people, that they can make adjustments to resolve the noise issues and not have us, not have to say things like, it's Oahu, you just got to live with it.
Totally understand. Absolutely.
Thank you, David. Yes, go ahead.
Hello. My name is Selena Jentkowski. I work with the US Army Garrison Hawaii. I'm the Community Relations Specialist there. We have done several presentations. The 25th ID CAB has done presentations about their flights, flight patterns, what they use, when they train, how they train, what times they train. If the board is interested, we can have them present their presentation here. That way, the community has better understanding of when and how and why some trainings happen in regards to noise. They also explain how they have changed patterns over the years due to community members giving their concerns. I can, I can set that up for some time in the future, and we can get together and share that.
I think that's a good idea. That'd be a good start for some understanding or better understanding. And like, like, you know, that David was saying is to, moving forward, think of ideas or something. So that might, that might be something to consider, yeah.
So I'd like to focus back to the issue, to the resolution. I don't have an issue with understanding. I understand. I understand that there have been initiatives in the past. That's great. The question is, we can always improve. How will we keep improving to be a better neighbor? Already a good neighbor. Thank you very much. How do we become a better neighbor? Increasingly progressive over time until we have complete resolution? Not more understanding. Understanding is not resolution. That's my comment.
Okay. Thank you. But all I'm saying is that sometimes to have the first meeting helps to give the understanding because not everyone is familiar with the situation. So that might be the starting point for a dialogue, right?
Madam Chair. Agreed. However, agreed. However, please put in the record. I want to stick to issue and resolution, not sidetrack that.
Understood. Okay, go ahead, Dean.
Aloha, Teresa Koehu. I'm a little concerned that this neighborhood board doesn't already have the list of training dates and times. In Mililani, we have received that. Maybe that's something that needs to be afforded to this community as well. We have a clear list of upcoming trainings. Part of the issue, I think, too, is the feeling of the same mantra. Oh, we have to change this because of weather. We have to change this because of that. I'm clearly looking into the sky and seeing clear skies. And I get it. I don't, I don't fly planes and helicopters. I don't know what the wind factors, but the consistency of it flying and very low, I can, there were times I could see the pilot's face. So I think that's where we're frustrated in a community where we're hearing all the niceties, but we still see the repeat. I appreciate that the Army has a buy-in with us. So you have more of an expectation that you want to help work it out. The problem is when we have other affiliations, like the Marine Corps Base that doesn't care because we're going to do what we want to do. That's really where the bigger issue is for the large training, the large-scale international training. That is the worst. But I think knowing when it's coming, it's kind of like New Year's, right? It's like, we know everybody's in pot fireworks, but it's the errant stuff. And I know firsthand because I had a neighbor who was a trainer, and a lot of it could be pilot error and the, just the disregard. Well, we're in a, we're in a plane. What are they going to do? So I think a lot of that has to, and it's hard because we do have military personnel that live in our communities. But they have a different perspective. They hear it. I mean, Lieutenant Colonel, he hears it over his house. And so what are you going to do? You can't just call 911 and report it. It's not going to go there. But I think the engagement, having the meetings in the community, at least hearing. But I think, as Mr. Wong shared, let's really look at resolving the issue, not just placating the neighborhood. But I think, Chair, you guys do need to get that scheduled because we have.
We do get it. We actually get, and we usually include it on the back page with, it was very long. We include the whole.
Yeah, okay. I just, they present it to us and give the listing at the meeting so everyone online can hear.
Yeah. So then, yeah, but it's a different format now, so it's, it's got to get.
Absolutely.
Okay, Dean, anything?
Before I ask to be recognized, anybody else want to come up and say something? Madam Chair, this board has heard many times from the military when they're going to have extra activity, such as training, such as more noise from helicopter, more noise from aircraft. We just went through one about three, four months ago. They were kind enough to give us the advanced warning. They also put out public notice. They put it also on the media, and they put it on their website. So there's no reason why you should not know, living in Oahu. I grew up in Oahu where military activity was 24/7. You had artillery, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning going off. Didn't bother us. We were scared. We thought, what's cool? We see the flares going off. Never bothered us. We thought, what's cool? So the military has gone, has come a long way to appease the request because before, I live right over here off of middle school, and that is a flight pattern in and out of Wheeler. Okay? So what you guys hear is just easy noise. What I hear and my house feels is true vibration, vibration because it's, but it's part of Oahu. And to say that to me, that it's not just Oahu, it is Oahu. And I'm not telling you to move if you don't like it, but still, you've moved into a community that is surrounded by military. They make up, if not, at least half of our businesses here in this community. So please, you know, I mean, I understand you want to meet your solution because it's something new to you that you folks have just moved up here. Not new? Okay. Oh, okay. Well, no, but you're here new in Oahu, correct? That's what I'm saying. Because that's what your wife said. You guys just recently moved here. Oh, she's, okay, I apologize. But still, so it's something you should be familiar with, you know? And just to say that, you know, we got to reach a solution. Once again, it's, it's a, are we going to tell the military, don't do any training at all? Just go fight? They can't do that. They can't do that. You know it, I know it. You're former military, you said it.
Incorrect. So you know. Incorrect. I'm not former military.
Oh, I thought you said.
He is family.
Oh, family. Oh, okay.
I have respect for the military. I appreciate the military. I appreciate what you just shared. I like to respond. Oahu is not, and every community is not the community that we all grew up with. All of our communities have changed. Ever Beach has changed, YNI has changed, Kailua, Conneewee. Every, every community in the nation all around the world has changed. It's changed. All I'm saying is, it's not good enough for us to simply say, that's what it is. Now, for some people, they say, hey, get used to it. And I say, no. Difference of opinions. But Dean, thank you for sharing. I appreciate that.
Go ahead, June.
Just have a little comment. I would encourage getting the Combat Aviation Brigade to give a presentation. The reason why I say that, they live under certain restrictions that we don't get a clear answer on right now. I used to be on active duty with the National Guard, the 19th Air Cavalry. And when we were operating, we had restrictions, like, I believe it was like, from 11:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning, we couldn't fire up those engines, the helicopters. And we also had restrictions on pyrotechnics. I don't recall what the buffer zone was, but it was like a thousand meters or 1,000 feet or something from the fence line on the East Range, where we could have set off the pyrotechnics. Of course, then you always had the problems of units ignoring the restrictions, where they would set off their pyrotechnics right next to the fence line and individuals that would set off smoke grenades right up near California Avenue. So sometimes the individual, individual company might ignore the rules, the range control rules. So if we do get that, can we get, find out what the restrictions are that the unit faces? Thank you very much.
Steve Amamota, thank you for sharing that. You jogged my memory. One of my surfing buddies is, I think, I think the, his position is a former range coordinator. He's the person who told me, he's retired now, Mike Neede, and he's the one who told me exactly what you said. There are limitations, there are different hours, there are posted hours. I think that should always be public. I think that should be posted publicly all over the place. I think everybody should have a contact number. We, I've called the range coordinator before. They just pretended like, oh, no, we don't know anything about that. So that would be clarification from the military also. Let's get, let's have, I request a script, an actual official script that we know when those hours are, if they're in violation, because they do violate. People are on the range, and they are violating that.
So we can look into that for, to getting, in addition to the regular schedule that you guys send us, the additional range schedule, if that's a separate item. Maybe we can talk about that later and see if we can, yes.
I'm sorry. Range as in munitions going off in East Range? Or are you talking about flight schedule? Munitions. Okay, so those, that is published. That, that is, that isn't, and it. So we publish advisories, training advisories. You are more than welcome to get onto the training advisory schedule. If you want to approach me in just a couple of minutes, I can give you the email so, or I can get your email so that I can, we can send you the training advisory schedule. And that's also sent to the neighborhood board. He also has it right now.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's, yeah, and that's what we used to post on our, on our, on our agenda. You'd always see it on the back, two pages of listings of things. Okay. Are we good? Yes, go ahead, TJ.
Oh, wait, TJ.
TJ first.
Just two things, actually three. Thank you very much for bearing with us. First thing, if, and I'm sorry to the woman that was just speaking, if you folks are going to have a community something or you want to be able to share information, I would strongly ask that you get the other branches of the military to be part of that conversation here. And maybe it shouldn't be at the neighborhood board meeting, but it should be a separate, a separate meeting where the different branches that affect our community are also participants in that conversation. Because like Ms. Koehu, Mrs. Koehu said, it's not always just the Army. And the other point that I wanted to make is, while it is great that we do get, these darn mosquitoes over here, they're just loving me tonight. While we do get the bulletins and the announcements about trainings, it's when we have pilots that deviate from that training because you cannot tell me that Ruta Man is flying that plane more than 1,000 feet above my house when I can look at my window and count the number of heads that are in that plane. That is not 1,000 feet. And the last thing, I would encourage any of you, not just the military, if you have an announcement or some information for the community, if you could please print it up, take copies to the library, do poster size, go out to the different area businesses and put them up because not everybody has an email address. Not everyone is able to go online and get the information. And I'm sorry, I was speaking to you. It's kind of rude that you turned away while I was talking to you. So if you don't mind, if you could just print up the notices, military's got lots of money, we know, because we play, we pay lots of taxes. Print the notices up, print the trainings up. You've got Kilani Bakery, the library, you've got Tanya's, you've got the bulletin board here. Post those things because, again, not everyone has access to an email address, and not everyone has the capabilities or the wherewithal to go to a website. So thank you very much.
Hey, Teresa?
Teresa Koehu, just to.
No, Teresa Koehu, just to tangent off of that. Maybe advertising in a sense, in like the midweek in the inserts for the communities that have, are within your bounds. Same places that you folks post your upcoming job fairs. That might be a good place to put something like that, whether it's a community meeting, whether, here's the training session, whatever it is that you would provide on these websites. Because a lot of the times, unless you're in a meeting like this or someone tells you, you don't know that there's even someplace to go and ask to be on a mailing list. But these are venues that are free and you don't have to go all the way around the communities. But wherever you post your upcoming job fairs, I would say maybe start there. But there are venues such as the midweek inserts that go for the local communities. That would be helpful.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Two things, quick comments. Noise complaints for the military can be lodged at 808-656-3487. Once again, 808-656-3487. That's for basically Schofield and Wheeler Air Force Base, Army Air Force Base, that you can lodge a noise complaint with them. And also, the Freedom Act, the Federal Freedom Act requirement only require any government agency to post, like I told you, on the media, post on their website, or post by email. After that, it does not require any specific postings of signs anymore. They don't do that anymore because, why, we like to think they have a lot of money. They don't, you know. Some, you hear it all the time, some military people got to wait for two, three weeks to get their paycheck. So that's sad, but I mean, that's just one of those things. So, you know, if you have the capability to get online into their system, please do that so you can receive, you can receive emails nowadays on this little device, which is a pain in the butt. But, you know, it alerts you to the different activities going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Hey, any other questions for our military?
Chair, just one last comment. While it's not a requirement, and thank you, Dean, for sharing about the federal freedom of information. It's not a requirement, but it certainly should be a courtesy that's afforded to the community. Other organizations have done it. And I don't see why our military partners in our community cannot post those signs as well. So thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment, Dean, in response regarding, the military has a lot of money. Who doesn't have a lot of money is all the peons like us. But my friend, my classmate, I'm not going to say his name. He's retiring from the Army. He retired first as a colonel from the Air Force and now retiring from the Army. And this is what, how much money he makes and what he said to me. Dave, I'm thinking I'm not going to take social security because some people really need that. The military has money.
Okay, thank, okay. I think, are we done with our Army representative?
Thanks so much. And we'll be here after the meeting, should you have any more questions. Thank you.
Hey, and at this point, we might have someone from the Navy. I'm not sure if Danny, Danny, are you on?
Aloha, Chair. Happy New Year to you and the community. Thanks for having me here. I will, I sent, early on, I sent our full report for this month. I hope you all got it. I'm just going to read some of the highlights right now that I'd like to share and then be available for questions. Also, there should be a representative from Joint Task Force Red Hill in case there's any more questions about that. So first off, Joint Task Force Red Hill completed gravity defueling back in December. They removed more than 104 million gallons of fuel during that time. What they mean by gravity defueling, that's all the fuel that's able to be removed from those tanks just by going through the pipes through gravity. This month, they began removing the residual fuel. That's the fuel that didn't come out through gravity defueling. And they estimate there is about, total still in the lines, about 64,000 gallons. They recently removed 12,345 of those gallons. The Joint Task Force will be in the process of transitioning with the Navy Closure Task Force over the next couple of months. And it'll be the Navy's mission at that point to remove all the residual fuel that's left over, which they estimate to be about 4,000 at that point. And then begin the cleaning process and begin closure after that. For community members who have questions about that, there will be a transition open house February 7. And that'll be at Kehe Lagoon Memorial Hall there. So if anyone has questions, they can go there. They can ask representatives from both the Navy Closure Task Force and the Joint Task Force Red Hill, who will be there. The Navy continues its drinking water long-term monitoring program. And they post the results of that and the Navy Water Quality Report online for community members who are still on the Navy water system. The next information booth will be January 25. It's, I believe it's Thursday. They can go there, it'll be at the Hickam Exchange to ask questions about that if they have questions about how to read that water quality report that's online. All of that stuff's available to the public. With that, I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Board members, any questions from board members? Okay, Aaron?
Hi, thanks for being here. This is Aaron. I have a question. So the, a previous meeting, the Board of Water let us know that our water bills are going to be going up. And then they also mentioned that they're hoping that the Navy would refund or provide reimbursement, I guess would be a word, for the cost of, for the state, for the money that the state spent in this defueling and the contamination. Has there been any resolve or any movement on that?
So thank you for the question. I can't speak specifically to what the Board of Water Supply is saying. I can tell you that the Navy is working with Board of Water Supply on various issues. We, we look forward to working with them on, on various topics, so.
So is the Navy covering the bill for the defueling? Is that federal funds?
So the defueling, yes, that's, that's already been budgeted, I believe. And they'll be working on that. Actual figures I don't have for the overall closure and whatnot. But if you want, I will write that down. And try to have some answer for you next month.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community here at District Park?
Aloha, Teresa Koehu. After the decommission and transition and shutdown of Red Hill, has the military decided a plan on continue testing? And if so, for how long are you going to continue to test until we can be determined that that area and the water that's coming out of the surrounding area is actually clean and clear of any and all chemicals?
Yes, thank you for that. As far as the timeline, I don't have. But the Navy will continue throughout the entire process to work with state and federal regulators. So the state and federal regulators, whether it's Department of Health and EPA, they're going to set the guidelines for us to follow. And we will follow them. Our leadership has said that they will, that we will be doing this the right way. So if that includes monitoring and testing, then that's what we're going to do.
Thank you, Danny. Any other questions from the community? Questions from anyone virtually? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Danny.
Thank you.
I do want to, before we go into Section B, I do want to state that Nicole Gray from Congress member Takuta's office is on vacation, so no report from that office. Moving on to government agency, Board of Water Supply? Anyone from Board of Water Supply? Okay, we're going to, on item, from DOH, we are in contact with DOT, I should say. We are in contact with a few things, a new one that I just learned of recently. So we will be having further discussions with DOT regarding some, the freeway issue and also the pedestrian bridge issue. Moving on to item five on residents' concerns. Any residents' concerns or announcements at this time?
So I'm actually going to take a point of privilege and use this time to introduce some new members of my office because it is getting late already. And by the time I report, it'll be 10 o'clock, so. I wanted to, and I wanted to introduce our new interns. So they're participants in Hawaii State House's legis, High School Legislative Internship Program. So if they could stand, and if you could hold your applause until I introduce them. So beside me have Darian Van Winkle. In the middle, Micah Zane and Esther Lim at the end. And they are highly accomplished students at Lelewa High School. And we are excited and honored to have them with us. They're going to be working with the community to do community outreach work and then also working on legislative work so they kind of learn the process and become more skilled and active citizens. So thank you so much for joining us and thank you.
Before you sit down, like, what grades are all of you in?
I am a sophomore at Lelewa High School.
I'm a junior at Lelewa High School.
Yes, like Micah, I am also a junior at Lelewa High School.
Okay, so all three of you are either sophomore or, or a junior. So one comment from each of you is, what did you hear tonight so far that piqued your interest? Like, I didn't know that about Wahawa, or, wow, you know. Tell us one thing you heard tonight that you found interesting.
I am pretty good. Hey, we're, we're almighty mules. We're almighty mules here, my friends.
So for me, it was the dirt bikes. I ran cross-country for the, so I actually got to see. So I actually got to see the fences around Lelewa High School. And I saw how they were cut up by, you know, dirt bikers to use those back roads. So as a cross-country runner, that kind of piqued my interest to see that.
Very good. So if we.
Great answer.
So I will agree, the dirt bikes was kind of interesting. And like, in my head, I was trying to brainstorm solutions to that. Haven't come up with anything yet, but still trying.
But it's a start. It's terrific. Okay.
Fabulous answer.
Not to put all of us on the spot, but all three of us are actually from military families. So the conversation between like the military branches and the interactions between the community really intrigued my interest. And there's a lot of it that we do not know much of as we are dependents. So it was really interesting to hear the community aspect of what they think about us being a community member of Hawaii.
Great answers, all three. Round of applause. And, yeah, thank you, thank you, Representative. Great answers. And every one of your questions or thoughts are true and it's part of what this neighborhood board is about, the whole system. This neighborhood board system is about that, to, to engage with the community, to hear things, brainstorm that you said, but to hear the concerns, you know. And, and when you live in Wahawa, I mean, every community is different. But when you live in Wahawa and we have multiracial community, but we also have military. So, you know, we, we are in a very unique, you know, and then we have, we are the Piko of the island. So we have, you know, Kuakani Loko and everything. So we have so many dynamic avenues to look at this area. So thank you for your thoughts and thank you for participating.
And I want to also add, while I have the opportunity. And we are only here in person, probably, this might be the only time until May or June because it gets busy down at the Capitol. So I would like to introduce in person, my office manager, Yvonne Euro, who also graduated from Lelewa High School. You can stand up. I know she's been on screen like every time, but in person.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
And then Diego Karanza, you've met multiple times. He's a youth commissioner, as is Esther Lim. So just to introduce my office, and we're really happy to participate in this process.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Okay, any other announcements, virtually? Any announcements from anyone virtually? Hi, Carlos, I see you up there. I'm going to give you a call tomorrow. There was some discussion tonight, so I'll give you a call about something tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, right on. Okay, everyone, we're going to move on.
Chair? Oh, I'm so sorry.
I have a community announcement. Esther, if you want to come up here. So with the Honolulu Youth Commission, we are coming here to formally introduce ourselves so that you guys know us. Hopefully, you'll see us at more of these neighborhood board meetings. I hope some of you are beginning to recognize my face. So I'm Diego Karanza. You met Esther. And the Honolulu Youth Commission is a collection of youth from around the island, appointed by city council or the mayor. And our job is to advise government, so specifically at the seating county, but we can also do at the state level and with the governor and the federal delegation. But just advise them on matters pertaining to youth. And so, we've been up to a few things. We, the session, session just kind of started. But we've been up to a few things. So we've been working with the mayor's office on creating a shadowing program for high schoolers to come in for a day or two and shadow department directors at the mayor's office. And we've been advising them on how to do that. We've got a chance to kind of pilot the program ourselves. And hopefully, coming the spring break, it will be open to high schoolers. We've also been doing a lot of work on outreach, kind of getting people to know that we're here and we're an outlet for youth voices. And then, time to, here's where you guys get out your pens. This Wednesday, the 24th, at 5:00 PM, we're going to be holding a youth town hall. So what this is going to include is, we're going to have Councilmember Dos Santos Tem come and speak about possible internship opportunities for high schoolers. Representative Amy Peruso is going to be speaking on ways to be civically involved. And then we'll also have time for youth to share their concerns, voice, you know, what's going on in their community, possible solutions that they might have. And hopefully, you know, if they express any solutions, we can take it out with the proper department or work to pass our own resolutions regarding that. So if you have any questions about that, you can go visit our website, Honolulu Youth Commission, or, and this is where you tell all the youth that you know to go to our Instagram page, Honolulu Youth Commission. And we post regular updates there. We just posted our newsletter that we're hoping to put out at least quarterly, giving regular updates, so they can sign up for our newsletter. And we really hope to see youth come out. It's going to be virtual. It's on the, it's on the social media. I also have two more flyers over there. I don't have too many, so please only take them if you're going to give them to youth that you know. But one's a flyer for our survey, so they can kind of, if they don't want to come testify at our monthly meetings, they can submit like concern, district, any solutions. And then just kind of how to follow us, ah, how to follow us, website, Instagram, stuff like that. Lastly, sorry, little, it's been a long day and I've, I've drank a lot of coffee. Lastly, what we're trying to do, is we're trying to get youth involved civically. I know personally, when I was going through high school, I didn't really feel like I had a voice and I grumbled a lot. We're trying to be that outlet for youth. We're trying to be their youth representatives. So it really helps in, you know, getting them civically involved, testifying at the city, testifying at the state, letting them know that they have a voice and hopefully inspiring them to do more civically.
So, yes, we are the Honolulu Youth Commission. And we do try to help and represent the youth. But behind all the youth are our supporters, our adults, people who actively help us to also gain a voice. So we would also appreciate if you guys, the survey that you mentioned, it's not only open for the youth, although it is youth targeted. So if there are any concerns or anything that you would want the youth to take initiative on, we would also appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Dean?
Dirt bikers. Your first hot topic. If you could just, you know, I know IG, you know, and you're right. You know, it's, it's a very short, you know, word program, but just. but just if you can, guys can come up with some things, you know, real quick and ask them to be mindful of the community that they're, they live in because it's not just Wahihua. You know, it is all over. But yeah, that'd be a great picture to see. Okay, Miles?
Chair? Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up. You said, uh, Wednesday, the 24th, 5:00 PM is your youth town hall. Where is it? Or where is it online or?
Yeah, it's gonna be virtual via Zoom, WebEx. It's gonna be virtual via WebEx. Adults are also welcome to attend, but we're, we're really trying to get youth. So please spread the word. And yeah, it's 5:00 PM and it's gonna go till about 7:00 PM.
So could you share the WebEx link, maybe with chair? And then of course you have my contact information. If you could share that with me, I'd be happy to share it with the youth.
Yes, I'll get that to you both tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you both. Yep, very good. Thank you, everyone.
And Chair, I just, I actually had an announcement.
Okay, go ahead.
So I sit in the chamber, the North Shore Chamber of Commerce Board, and I would like to invite all of you on Wednesday at 8 o'clock to Holly Eva Jones. The North Shore Chamber of Commerce is having its first general membership meeting of 2024. If you are not a member, join and your breakfast is only $10. And if you want to just be a guest, it's $15. But please come down. We'll be at Holly Eva Jones in the morning at 8 o'clock. So please come and join us. And this would be a Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, and it's at 8 o'clock. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead. Hi, okay, so this is a community announcement. Super excited, Diego. I feel like this goes along with what you're saying. So I am in self-torture right now. I'm getting my doctorate in education and I'm studying civic engagement of young adults. And the way I framed it is 18 to 25 year olds. So as an educator, I don't really always get to see the product, right? I spend a lot of time in elementary schools and my hope, hope is that they'll become civically engaged. So I'm doing interviews and surveys of young adults in Wahihua and Whitmore Village. I actually have a small grant, so I'm paying for participation too. So it looks like this and I put flyers up there. So if you know young graduates who, who from this neighborhood would love to have their opinion, so they fill out the survey and then if they complete the interview, they get a small stipend, I guess, or it's just a small notice of gratitude. But more importantly, I just want to hear voices. I want to, it's not a representative sample. I'm just one person. It's super mani-mani. It's just for my benefit in terms of my educational pursuit, but I also just want to hear more back from the community.
But Erin, if they, if, if, do they need that information or is there somewhere they can go to?
Yeah, so I have a Bitly. So it's HTTPS colon slash slash Bitly short CC. But it has a URL, what is that QR code? And then I also have hard copies with a self-entitled.
Okay. And it's on the table then?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, very good. All right.
Only the youth, no, no Kupuna.
I will always take your opinion.
Good evening, my name is TC. Last, for the last previous meeting that we, we requested the DOT for a list of people that sign up for against and for the bridge in Wahihua. Do we get that, that list yet or?
So actually I put a call in, but one of our other board members has also been talking to. So we will coordinate.
Because you, so you say we got like almost, huh? Next month or next year?
We will chat, yeah, so.
Oh, next year or next month, sorry.
Yeah. So we're trying to get.
So anyway, we just want to see how many people are for and how many people against it. So that we can know because the bridge is going on.
Yeah. So we know what was when, earlier when the, um, there were meetings here and in Whitmore. So we know what that count was then. Um, since then, there hasn't been another count, if you will.
You know, because we get, we got about 99% against it. But now, now they said we have about what, 50 or 960 people for it. Make sure that people that live here that, that sign for it, not people living Waikiki or Kanioe or, or any place that sign for it, right?
Right.
Because this is for our community, not for people from outside to do that.
So that's when, at that last meeting, it was a surprise to hear that it's being, the project is being looked at again when you came at last month, yes?
Yeah. No, just, that's not my concern.
Yeah, so I'll be following up. I'm, like I said, I had put a call in, but another board member has also put a call in and, and we'll get that coordinated so we can get it on schedule, hopefully.
Yeah. So at least we see, you know, it's rigid that people, you know, it's a, if people are rigidly say for it, then we'll go for it, right? People that not say no, then we have, you cannot just, you know, put it something that the community don't want it, you know, just force our, you know, force us to do that, okay?
Siva, I'll follow up with you too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. And then, yes, June?
March 6th, writing here, starting at 6 o'clock, the Democratic Party is conducting the, this is affect most, most of the people. But there's a presidential preference poll that is being conducted that night for the Democratic Party. And if you want to participate, you have to be a member of the Democratic Party to vote in that thing, just like four years ago. But this time they're not because they can't afford to send out all these mailers this, this time. So it'll be live. You have to be here to vote. If you're not a party member, you can sign up that night on the spot. Okay, so, so March 6th, presidential preference poll, starting at 6:00.
PM?
Yes, writing here, yeah.
Okay.
So, and then there's other things going on, but I, I think most of people will be interested in the presidential preference poll. Don't ask me when the Republicans are doing this because I don't know.
That was an unnecessary comment. So, okay. Yeah, but, yes, go ahead.
Good evening, my name's Leanne Baker and I had a, uh, two topics. The first one was the, I saw on the news, the Kahalei is, they set it up. I guess they moved it from the Department of Health by Washington Place to Kanioe. And the community wasn't actually notified ahead of time. Not until, I think it just said Tuesday. But the project is slated for five years there. So I heard Wahihua is going to have another Kahalei. So is that going to be the tent or are they actually going to build buildings? And is that going to be there for five years? Because my question regarding that is, they aren't going to use the property that we were trying to get the Farmers Processing Center? Because that's where it was last time.
I'm gonna. Chair? Check with our, either city or state, or state rep, yeah.
Actually, Chair, may I answer her question? So I actually reached out to the Honu, my contact at the Honu, and they said that they were considering bringing the Honu back out to Wahihua and it would be in the same spot that it was in Whitmore Village. But I don't, it, it will probably be for the 60 or 90 days again that it had been prior. And I have asked them that when they are certain that it will come to our community, if they could let the neighborhood board chair know or attend one of our meetings before it actually happens. Thank you for your question.
Okay. And then my second one was legislature opened on the 17th. And on the 18th, there was a HB Bill 1815 and it changed the definition of enterprise for the ADC and it included agritourism. To me, if anyone reads that, it's more like there's a cart, but there's no horse. Because we will be inundated with things happening and we don't have the infrastructure. I did write something, but two minutes short. Thank you.
And later when we get to our senator's rep, yeah, we can maybe get some update on that for the time of the agenda.
1815.
Yeah, maybe if.
Well, it said it was gonna go into effect July 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Baker, what was the number again? HB?
1815.
1815.
Thank you so much.
Any other announcements during this, during this section? Otherwise we have presentations to get to.
Hello, Trisakoi Hu. Just as a follow-up, I believe Kealaho is who's coordinating to help take over where Chief Zero kind of left off. So I believe that it's being coordinated about now with Kealaho, West Oahu. That was shared with a different rep for our district. So I believe Representative La Chica's website had some information on there. So that might curtail.
And just also to add on to that, I'm not sure if you folks know about the point in time count, but Kealaho West Oahu, which is the group that Mrs. Kuehu was speaking about, they are partnering with IHS to do the point in time count, which is a federally funded survey that helps organizations to get a, uh, it helps, actually it helps us as a community to get a better count of those who are actually on the street the night of January 22nd. So if anybody would like to join us, we are gonna be here tomorrow morning at 5:45 at the bathroom out here at Wahihua District Park. And we have a crew of about 30 volunteers that will be going out and visiting our homeless encampments in the 96786 area. 5:45 by the bathroom here at the district park. We would love to have as many of you join us tomorrow. Thank you.
And that's actually tomorrow, the 23rd. Today's the 26th.
No, I know, but they ask, they ask. It is on the 23rd, but part of the questions that they ask someone that is homeless or houseless is where did you sleep on the night of January 22nd?
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I think we're done with our community announcements at this point. We're gonna move on to section six, which is our presentations. And first up is an update from Wahihua General Hospital. Brian Cunningham, CEO of Wahihua General Hospital. Hi, Brian.
Hello, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, board members. And I appreciate our community members as usual and our legislative representatives. Thank you so much for the support over all these years. I have just a brief update for you. You know, the big news obviously is we're at approximately 70 days away from the closing of the acquisition of the hospital by the Queens Health System. And of course, we're very excited about that. There's a lot of challenges to this transition of ownership while we're still managing all the, you know, care at the hospital. But of course, the benefits to the sustainability of critical health care services long into the future are well worth the effort. So we're, we're really excited about that. So we want you to know that we continue to work to manage the hospital, serve our patients and customers. And there's a lot of interaction between hospital and Queens as far as due diligence back and forth, you know, numerous document requests, contracts, documents, you know, legal documents so that we can make sure that we got all the i's, cross all the t's, make sure that we notice all of the state and federal agencies about this. So there's a lot of that type of work. Queens continues to come out and do various site visits at the hospital as they attempt to finalize their plans for the most immediate part of the transition of ownership and of course, and the six-month, year and onward. So I want you to know that we are still just so proud to be serving this community and excited with all the work that we're doing to affect this transition of ownership. So that's the basic update I wanted to share with you. I'd rather just open up any questions you may have.
Dean and TJ?
Thank you, Brian. A quick question. I'm not a tree hugger, but I was asked, um, the tree that exists right on the corner of, by the gift shop, the old gift shop on the property. They're not going to be removing that tree because that tree, I don't know, I think is almost 100 years old, if not older. Do you know what Queens' plans are regarding the grounds in the property?
We don't have their exact plans yet and I don't know what any plans would be on, you know, that tree or any other tree. You know, obviously you're very well aware, there's a process to go through if there's gonna be any removal or even trimming of a, of a tree along that line. So I don't really know yet. As they said at the last meeting here, and I think that update still stands, that they are going to be reviewing the, the major steps of the expansion of Wahihua along with the community. So over these next two years, I'm sure they're gonna be coming to see all of you and get your input as they move forward.
Okay, great. Well, if you could just pass that on to them, that they can somehow work to keep that tree on the property. I think that's something that would be very, um, you know, mindful of the community. Because that tree, I grew up with that tree, so.
Oh, my gosh.
Quite 100, but almost.
Yeah. And that's a tree close, close to the street, towards the corner by the.
Right on the corner, right on the corner of.
Got it.
Lehuwa and Kilali.
Got it. Thank you so much. Will do.
It's where the, it's where the old thrift shop used to be.
Yes.
That building, yeah.
Thank you.
And TJ?
Thank you for joining us, Mr. Cunningham. Just two questions. The first is that I've been asked by community members that are employed at Wahihua General Hospital currently, how many of them are going to lose their jobs? And also, um, is Wahihua Hospital, once under the Queens Healthcare Corporation umbrella, will they be performing only emergent care services?
These are great questions. And a, as you all know, the transition of ownership, the ownership goes to Queens. Therefore, all decisions made about positions and services will be made by Queens. That's what they're assessing as we speak. So what we've continued to men, to, to mention, we update our staff every week on this item. We send memos and my doors open, is that Queens let us know that they will be coming to the organization soon and be sharing all of the open positions that will continue on the Wahihua campus as well as all other open positions in the Queens system with our staff. It'll be at that point, we'll, we'll have a sense of how many will be joining Queens at our campus or Queens somewhere else or any of the other healthcare organizations around. Everybody's looking for healthcare workers. So those decisions will be made by Queens, service lines made by Queens. But my understanding and what Jason and Darlena shared with us last time they were here is their focus as of the start of the transition will be on maintaining those critical emergency services and all the services that support that. Imaging lab, you know, pharmacy and all of the support workforce to manage that. So they, they've been clear about that. Initially, that's gonna be their thrust and their focus while they work with the community to determine what additional services will be needed longer term.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We appreciate any continued updates that you can provide to us.
Be glad to. Appreciate your work in the community also.
Any other questions from the board? Questions from the community? Virtually, questions from the community? Okay, thank you very much, Brian. See you next month.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Will do.
Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on to item B on the presentation. This was something we already heard about. We talked about early with HPD here. But, you know, I just wanted to share that I got eight or nine phone calls slash emails in this month of January from numerous people, residents, about their concerns regarding Avocado Street and what's happening with that. We did get an update from HPD. I did talk to him briefly before he made his presentation. But I, and also did have a brief moment to, to talk with Kelly. So Kelly, I don't know if you want to save your update for your report, just like, it's pretty much the same thing that HPD was saying, that Kelly and her off, and council member, they've reached out to the property owner, not getting calls back. The, the property is private property, so they still have a right. You know, it's not public property. So there is, we're kind of in a stuck position. I know there's been calls going through DPP again, whether it's through council member's office or through HPD. So we are gonna continue, we're gonna look for what can be done. But because it's private property, it gets a little gnarly as, you know, because he's paying his taxes, he's paying his property, you know. But it is, uh, my concern is that it's, it, I stood across of it. I didn't, but with my cane as I hobbled over and everything, the concern is that it really is not just a safety issue, but it's a, it's a, whether it's, you know, whether it's a security. but it's a, whether it's, you know, whether it's security, cleanliness, you know, just in all aspects of it. So, you know, we will continue working on this in terms of getting information. We are working with the city now and making contact with HPD. So even the HPD officer said he'll keep in contact to see if there's anything else they can do as well. So that's what this is about. We just, I just want to make sure you know that we're getting, before we're getting one or two calls, this is like a lot of calls now, because it is, it is an eyesore, to say the least, you know. And it is, it can be dangerous or hazardous. Okay, moving on to section seven.
Chair, excuse me, I just had a question. When does the condition of this particular address become a health concern? I mean, it already is, because as you well know, if you're a property owner in the city and county of Honolulu, if your grass is unruly or overgrown, a DPP inspector is out there, lickety-split, ready to issue you a notice of violation, and they are there on the 31st day to check your property if it isn't, if it doesn't meet the standards. And in this particular case, we have Silver Crest, which is a kupuna complex, not far away from there. And I have been approached by many, many community members who at one time used to walk in that area, but are now afraid to do so because of the going, the goings-on at that site. And some of our residents in the area also walk to the Walgreens because it's the only pharmacy that is in, within walking distance for them. So when does that lack of maintenance of that site become a health problem to our community?
100%, that's what we, that's exactly, if not pretty much, the same question I asked when we had discussion, yes, okay, yeah. And also at HPD, like, there has to be a way that we can get this through. But go ahead, Kelly, see what we, whichever one.
Okay, so Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires' office. And I think I spoke with you, TJ, about that issue. So DPP did go out and issue an NOV. So I believe it's generally 30 days for the property owner to remedy the situation. It was issued, I believe, for the trash. And I believe he did deem the, one of the buildings, I believe it was the one closest to Cam Highway, it looks like the roof is compromised. Yeah, and that's, well, they're actually in both buildings, the illegal tenants. So they have 30 days, I believe. Please don't quote me, because this is a commercial property, but I would believe it's the same for residential as well. That's why I'm saying 30. So in 30 days, if the property or the violation is not remedied, then it becomes an NOO, which is a notice of order, and then the daily fines start accruing. But, yeah, we're definitely watching this one. I don't remember what the exact date would be, the 30th day since the NOV was issued.
Right, and I did get a notice from the inspector about that. But Kelly, when does, when does the, when does somebody actually step in? I understand the notice gets sent, the violation, the order. When does somebody actually take possession of the property? Because it is putrid, a new word, putrid. P-U-T-R-I-D. I don't have another meaning, I don't have the word origin, but it is putrid.
I know, I just drove past it.
Right, and so I am fortunate enough to be able to speak with the residents at Silver Crest on the third Tuesday of every month. So if there's something that we can tell them, and I'm always happy to give them good news.
I also did follow up with Senator's office, and they were gonna be sending out Department of Health because it, I mean, the trash and I'm assuming there's probably.
And it's becoming a fire hazard, you know. And I saw somebody last week, Friday, had his chair and had like a little cooler, and he had items that looked like he had cleaned off, and he was gonna make maybe a gratel over there. So, I mean, I get it, I understand the process. But if we could just move a little faster, I mean, it does really scare the community members. And we already have a house that's in the area that burned, I don't know how many years ago, and I would hate to see the same thing happen too. Yeah, so thanks for all your work, because I know this is.
Thank you for your support and thank you for your patience. I've been working on this during Councilmember Sunil She's time. I don't know if Senator's representative is on, but maybe they can kind of speak to where they are with DOH.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, but, oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Just for your information, members from the Latter Day Saints Church has called regarding people jumping their fence and bathing now in their parking lot. So I suggested that they remove the handle to the water faucet.
You know, but sometimes they get the Kia.
Yeah, usually it's in the, according to their camera setup or the people who've driven by, it's usually late at night, anywhere between, once the sun goes down till the sun comes up. You know, but they have had complaints, HPD has.
Okay, I was gonna ask.
Yeah, yeah, they did also notify, I told them to notify them. But they said nobody should be on property. And they just went, and they said it's people coming from that dilapidated building. Yeah, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Dean, and that was one of the calls I got too, yeah. So that's why, go ahead.
At one point, they did clean it up.
Yes, they did.
So this notice that they got, say they clean it up again, and in a week, it starts getting bad again. How often do these people, does the government come and check?
I can send DPP out again.
So it is complaint-driven, though, I mean, you get, yeah, that's something, yeah. So that part of it is, is from what we've all heard, whether, from whoever we talk to, because it's private property, because he's paying it. If you get an NOV and you continually pay it, or, I mean, you continue that not pay it, the fines go up and it's like the Beach Homes North Shore. They're in, they're close to a million dollars, they just keep, it just, and they keep living at their house and the home, and you know, whatever, burritos, sandbags, but, but they continue, they're allowed to continue living there, and the fines keep going on. And I'm hoping that doesn't happen to Avocado Street. I'm hoping we can get that cleared up sooner.
Let me just clarify, though, to what Board Member Umaki had asked. So if the NOV is still outstanding, they won't go back and keep reissuing. Once it get, if he remedies the situation, they close out the NOV. And then if it happens again, they don't actually, I believe they don't issue another one, it becomes considered like a recurring. And so it's already, like, I think it just goes straight to NOO, Notice of Order. Please don't quote me on that. Yeah, they don't, yeah. So if that makes sense.
And see, the problem or the issue with this property was, is about two years ago, when he did actually put up the two-by-four and all that fence and whatnot. He actually did have a permit that was issued for demolition. And they kind of did some, and then nothing happened. And now I went over there, and I talked to one of the guys that was working there. He was putting up the, oh, no, he was removing his equipment. And I asked him, "Oh, you leaving?" He said, "Oh, yeah, we power already." And.
Sure he was contracted from the.
No, he was, oh, no, he was a contractor, because I knew him.
Okay, because.
No, but he was, he was, he was there, but use the 311 app, take a picture, file a complaint, call DPP, make the complaint. And I am gonna keep saying it again, we have to do it together as a community. And if anybody out there needs the number for DPP, please reach out to Councilmember Wires' office for that information. If you can go online or have somebody that can go online, please go out there. I mean, please go and take a picture, just call, because our community needs to speak up to get something like this taken care of.
I'm sorry, my, my phone number, 80, yeah, because I don't have VPP's number offhand. So my phone number, my direct number is 808-768-5039.
You're welcome. All right, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to our elected official, elected officials. And can we call up our mirrors? Hi, Kevin.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members. I'm Kevin O'J, I'm the Deputy Director of Housing for the city and county of Honolulu. Just a couple of comments on the, on that, on that property that you're discussing. As Kelly knows, that the condemnation process is really difficult, and it's really long. Because once you repay the fines, the media just starts all over again. And it's, because we just completed condemnation proceedings where we actually took two properties back, and it took, it took years, it was a long time. In the neighborhood I live in, we had an individual that was a hoarder. And it just, the problem continues to this day. It's been going on for a decade. It's just really, really, really difficult. Government taking a private property is not an easy process. But just some, some quick announcements, real quick. We were talking about homelessness and wanted to make an announcement. I'm sure some of you heard, but the mayor has appointed Sam Moku as his new homeless coordinator. Sam is just an outstanding individual. He's been in public service for as long as I can certainly remember. He actually used to run the Department of Community Services about a decade ago. So we're hopeful, we're gonna hear a lot of good things coming out of that office real soon. Moving forward, any questions required relating to homelessness should be directed to the Department of Community Services. And I'll give you that telephone number. It's 808-768-7760. Just another couple of quick announcements. I'm not sure if you've seen the mayor's highlights for this month, but it's actually a pretty interesting addition. It's got, you know, Honolulu by the numbers, the county and department numbers, some really interesting things, like the Department of Environmental Services disposes of over 823,000 tons of trash every year. So it's just a neat thing to go through and see what the city does for you. There was a question at the last meeting, I believe in December, about the Wahahuahua Elementary School. I don't know if that's been addressed. Yeah, a resident raised concern about the crosswalk there, it's just not draining. And so we've reached out to a couple of different departments. Apparently, Glen Avenue, it's got unimproved shoulders, there's no curbs, no gutter. And when they built the crosswalk and that crossing island, unfortunately, drainage wasn't a part of that project, which was unfortunate. So our Department of Facilities Maintenance is gonna be working with Department of Design and Construction to see if we can get that on a CIP bill. Because it looks like the drainage, that the sewer is like 150 feet away. And it's, it's a real issue. Yeah, so they're gonna try to coordinate. I don't know how long that will take. Budget process is in the works now. I'm not sure if they've just got discretionary budget for that. But we've raised the alarm, and hopefully we'll get more responses to that in the future.
Okay, very good. Well, I'll help follow up on that as well.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I guess the last quick announcement is the Neighborhood Commission Office is hiring Neighborhood Board Assistants. I noticed we had a lot of young people in the, in the office, in the, in the audience tonight. If they have an interest in doing that, anyone can send their resume in. You can send that to nco@honolulu.gov, or you can call the NCO at 808-768-3710. And that's all I had. Also. And Chair, for the record, I just wanted to note that I do not drive a dirt bike. I'm a Harley.
Wait, hey, don't run away yet, we got, we got Q and A, you never know. Board members.
Trying to make it quick.
Board, go ahead, TJ.
Glad to hear that you don't ride a dirt bike. And if you do decide, make sure you wear a helmet. Could you please follow up on that issue with, in front of Wahahuahua Elementary School? Because a resident that came in November, he actually has been asking for that for years. And it's now becoming more of an issue since they built that, what did you call it? The traffic island. Because when my sons were there, that traffic island was not there, and it was horrible back then. And my sons are 38 and 33 right now. So it's been, it's been for a while. So if you could continue to provide us updates, I will invite the resident back to maybe the next meeting or the March meeting, so he can hear from you as well.
I certainly will.
Thank you.
The good news is, I only have one item on my follow-up list, so it's at the top of my.
Fabulous.
But like I said, I'll be in contact, because I have his name and number. So like I said, I'll follow and let him know.
That'd be great.
And actually, Chair, just one more question. Are you folks, is the city associated with the CORE program, or is that a state thing?
No, they certainly are, yeah. It's EMS CORE, it's the Jim Ireland.
Right. Could you please follow up with them? I've invited them out to Wahahuahua multiple times. And for those of you who know me, you know that I do a lot of volunteer work with our houseless and our homeless population. And I actually invited Mr. Ireland out probably two years ago. And I've been calling like every six months, and CORE has not yet come out. And I get, I get the whole, we're understaffed and we don't have people. But if they can come out, even once or, I don't know how often they do it, but that would be really good.
Sure, what would you like, I can give them a call tomorrow. What would you like them to do?
Come out to Wahahuahua and provide their services here in Wahahuahua.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right, because we don't currently have any place where showers can be done or laundry services. They can partner with, I think it's HHRC, or even with Project Vision. And these are agencies that have the ability and the capability to provide these services in our community. It's just a matter of making it happen.
Sounds like maybe a coordinated effort between Dr. Ireland's team in DC at Department of Community Services.
Thank you. And if you need me to be a community, whatever, let me know.
Certainly.
Happy to do it.
And Dean?
Thank you for coming out tonight. I wanted to bring up two things. First of all, thank the mayor, they have fixed the hot water heater for the showers. Not the pool yet, but the showers here at the pool. So the kupuna are happy, yeah, some progress. But the other thing I'd like to.
By the way. Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Kelly. No wonder. But the other thing I'd like the city to consider, much like the bicycle license or the bicycle tag, would the city look into legislative creation of a tag plate for off-road vehicles? You know, there has to be something that can be affixed to the, to these dirt bikes, to the ATVs, that it's not a, you know, and call it off-road vehicle license plate or tag plate. This way, when someone takes, is violating the law, a constituent can see, take a picture of it, and then HPD has a little bit more information to run it through the computer, see who that ATV or motorcycle is registered to, and then follow up. Right, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just hoping that you could provide a public update on the work that the city is doing around traffic calming in three areas. So one is Rose and Loke Street. The community has been very active on this issue and have been working with Joe Francher. And they had already collected signatures on a petition. So I'm wondering about traffic calming on that street. And then at the top of California, as you make two 90-degree turns, there's some very dangerous speeding that's happening there. And then also, along California, we're wondering about the walkways for students above Lelehua High School. So if you don't have answers to those questions right now, I didn't think you would, but if you could come back to us with a report, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly will, yeah.
Thank you.
Hopefully next month, for sure.
Thank you, Representative, and TJ. Last one, and Rep. actually kind of got my question in. But there were some questions from residents along Rose Street. And I'm not sure where this other gentleman lives, but I think he does live on Local. What can we do about getting speed bumps or other calming measures implemented on Rose Street and Local Drive? Thank you.
Follow up on it.
Now that we're on the topics of sidewalks. So I've been doing the safe walking in the mornings at Kaala, and I'm so surprised how muddy and just, there's no roads connecting. And so a lot of students don't walk, and so that leads to absenteeism, right? Because there's no buses, because they live within a mile radius of the school. So, you know, we don't want to shut down the roads to build these sidewalks, and then, you know, construction takes two years. However, you know, some way that there could be a safe walking too. I mean, there are volunteers at the. I mean, there are volunteers at the school, or actually, there's people at the school coming in early, the counselors, the social worker, and showing up. And it takes, you know, ten volunteers to walk students around. Parents are becoming very trusting. They see us and they wave and then, you know, feel comfortable then sending their, you know, child to school, you know? But it's, it's really dangerous. There's people rushing to work. There's no sidewalks. There's a lot of construction, and then there's lack of parking. So then people are, you know, you don't want to take parking away. So it's a conundrum, right? Because there's a lot of people living there.
Is it raised curb sidewalks that?
There are no sidewalks at all.
So you're seeking.
Right. So by, I, I'm like situated by, I guess, like behind Walgreens. I don't know all the streets back there, but in those areas, you might know the streets better.
Well, maybe this is an opportunity, Erin, to invite the mayor and his team to come out and be part of this walking, what did you folks call it?
Safe walking.
Safe walking.
Streets. We meet at six forty-five at Walgreens in the morning. And then we have different stations, and we wear safety vests. Lisa Nakamoto, the principal, has done a great job of organizing it. So you feel safe out there. And then students get tickets. And so they take their tickets in the morning and they are able to get a treat. So it's an incentive for the students.
Well, Kevin, I think this is a fabulous opportunity to invite the mayor into our beautiful Wahihua at six forty-five in the morning. Tell him to wear a sweater, though.
It's like lunchtime for him, I'll tell you.
It's like, Dean, why are you laughing? It's like fifty-six degrees, fifty-eight degrees, six forty-five. And if he does come, I'm happy to make, I will make some scones.
You know, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, it sounds, it sounds like there's a lot of traffic, road-related, walkway-related issues. Can we, maybe it's, might be an opportunity to kind of, you know, aggregate those and get them in front of the right folks.
Again, maybe an opportunity for the mayor's office to host a meeting. And we can bring all of these issues specifically to them, you know?
But I, you know, could we get, is there a comprehensive list of all of?
Yeah.
Who's got it?
OMPO has it. O-M-P-O.
Okay.
Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization. That's, that's through the, that's through the, through DTS and, and yeah.
Exactly, that's what I'm thinking.
So Joe's our representative on that OMPO.
Rather than one-off, I mean, if there's several. It's helpful as part of the CIP planning process.
Yeah. So we actually did go through that, those meetings before and walking, we did the walks all through, and that's where they got the data from and put together the catalog book of areas and whatnot. And they're supposed to keep us updated or apprise of when they do updates?
Who's they? DTS?
When they, when they do, yeah. So if they do any updates or, or need to do review, surveying and stuff like that.
Are they working with DTS? And do we know if these?
That they do.
Have they been identified in, in their CIP planning, Six Year Planning?
Yeah. Yeah. It was all done, that was done, so Joe, myself. I'm a former council member.
And so what would be useful, having DTS come and do a follow-up on where they are with the Six Year Plan and what's?
Well, there's several, I, I still have my notes, but I think it's in the booklet too. But we can, we can, you know, we can share, yeah, exchange information, yeah.
Chair. Chair Shikawa. Dylan, right here.
I do just want to note, it's not finalized or published, but I believe the mayor's intent is to come out and do town halls again across the island. So anything that you guys have, organize, get your details, facts together, and they will have one representative from every department there to address concerns. They'll take you off on the side, they'll do follow-ups. So just keep a heads up, and I'm sure Kevin's going to announce it at the next meeting or so.
They're actually, stole my thunder. They're, they're working, they're working on the schedule for that now. So, so we'll certainly be back out again.
Can you please ask him to do that at Wahihua, since Mililani just did it?
Sure.
Fabulous.
Absolutely. I'll see him Wednesday.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for our mayor? Yes, go ahead.
I don't know if you noticed, but there are tennis courts right over here. I don't know if they were purposely taken down or the people sat on the cable line for the tennis courts, courts three and four. And the tennis court, the other netting is all down. And then I happened to hear, I don't hope this isn't true, that they're considering, Parks and Rec is considering to move those to pickleball. They went pickleball, Tom Go'Kali, I mean, K, K, yeah. Because they got all those old courts that they converted over to pickleball. Or actually, they can do Ka'ala or Mililani. But we have a lot of tennis players out here. And I don't know what happened to the two courts that the nets are down, so you can have Parks look into it. Thank you.
Got a longer list now. It's all good.
Okay. I think we're done with Kevin. Yep, no other questions, questions virtually for the mayor's office? I think we're good. I think we're good. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, we're going to move on to Councilmember Wire's office. I believe you did part of your report.
Okay, Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. Thank you for having me. Just a couple of things on the newsletter that I passed out. Bill one, which relates to the, well, it would relate to the banning of herbal cigarettes to anyone under the age of twenty-one. Currently, herbal cigarettes are not included with the tobacco, because it does not contain tobacco. It's actually scheduled for this Wednesday's full council hearing. Also, councilmembers, Bill Resolution, rather, twenty-three three oh eight, which relates to the invasive species, that is actually scheduled for this Wednesday's full council hearing. And I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be adopted. I also included the Turtle Bay Scholarship, because I know we have a lot of residents here with ties to the North Shore. So if you know any students that are interested, you can scan the QR code. Please note that the due date is February sixteen. Also, I think I might be able to help Kevin out with some of those concerns regarding Rose and Local Street. I'm sorry, Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Rep Russo, you were asking about the speeding. I did talk to DTS. They said they last did a traffic study in August of 2023, and they didn't find anything warranted, which is why it's, I know. And Board Member Harvest, I know I spoke to you before about Local Street, or Local Drive, rather, about the speed humps or the bumps. That also is an issue with regards to the trash pickup. I can try and follow up again. I know that was during Councilmember Sunio she's time, so maybe DTS might be able to take a look at that again. As far as top of California Ave, I'm sorry, the walkways. I know the last time I spoke with DTS, some of the federal funding had lapsed, and we're waiting for the funding to hopefully get reapproved and we can start with the design. So not quite sure where we are with that, but it is still in the works. Yep. That's it. If anybody has any questions?
Yes, Board Member?
Kelly, just for your info, since I have lived on Local Drive for the last forty-something years, there have been six vehicles that went racing down Local to Rose, missing the turn and went right into that house. There has been two houses on Local Drive that people speeding have lost control and driven into homes. One, I don't want to say her name, but it's a very nice home mid-block, midway up Local. And the other one was at the top. So for DTS to say, there's nothing warranted, you know what? They're not here, yeah.
That was on Rose, but the, the Local Drive one, I think that we're asking for the speed bumps, I believe, yeah, during Council.
On Local, right, yeah.
I think that was more of an issue because of the trash trucks and everything.
Trash trucks go over speed humps all over the other part of the city. You know, I mean, it's just like how the DTS said, oh, we can't bring the articulated bus out to Wahihua. Oh, now, well, look at our, we have it. So I mean, don't blow smoke up our Elmo, please. I mean, it's just something that needs to be, again, a problem that we're requesting. We have a lot of kupuna. You have had major accidents on our street where, you know, something does need to be done. So I, I, I appreciate your hard work. Yeah, I appreciate your hard work. And if they need stats, tell them, go contact HPD's Records Department for.
Because that's part of their traffic study. They.
Look up the accidents, yeah.
They look at the collision report.
Right.
Past three years.
Right. Oh, past three, okay.
I think maybe.
Well, I guess forty, forty-something years and past three years. Nah, I'm not going to cut it. Okay. I appreciate it, though. Keep, keep pounding them.
Look into it again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you. And TJ. Kelly, we appreciate all the work that you do for us in the community as part of Councilmember Matt Wire's office. But I have a big ask, and I can email you the information.
You're asking Councilmember?
Yeah. I'm asking, I'm asking Councilmember Matt Wire to please take a look at Bill forty-three from 2017, which is relating to the maintenance of channels, stream beds, stream banks and drainage ways, which essentially puts the maintenance of these waterways into the hands of the property owners. If you could please look at that, and I'm happy to have a discussion about it, and let's find a way, I don't know if it's done, but if we can repeal that bill. I will send you the, because it, what it essentially does is it puts the responsibility or the kuleana of taking care of a stream or a waterway that's adjacent to your property to the homeowner. Here's the problem. If I'm living next to a stream and there's somebody on the other side of the stream, also, my responsibility under this bill is to only halfway into the stream. So for my property, I have to not only maintain and clean my property, I have to clean and maintain only fifty percent of the waterway. If the owner on the other side is not able to, or cannot, or for whatever reason doesn't want to, if he doesn't want to clean his half of the stream, it makes absolutely no sense for me to do mine. So it was introduced by someone who lives in the community that has maybe one or two waterways. And at that time, Ernie Martin was our city councilperson. And when I looked at the testimony, there were only two people that opposed it. And those two people were not from our district, and I mean, they were not from our council district. So if there is a way to repeal something like this, I would be happy to take up that cause, if you could let me know how.
I have to, I'm not totally versed on red.
Because this bill actually affects a lot of our families that are not only in, in Wahihua, along where Pau Kewila and Lake Wilson are, but it also affects our neighboring communities just down the hill in the, in the North Shore. Like, as we all witnessed a couple of years ago when Haleiva flooded, some of that rain, that rain cell actually sat up here in Wahihua, and then it, it moved over and Haleiva and Wayalua got flooded. And so there was a lot of damage done. And so we would like some help from our councilperson to repeal this bill and put the responsibility of maintaining these stream beds back to where it belongs with the city.
And the state.
And the state.
And the military.
And the military. Let's take it out of our community hands, our resident hands, and put it where it belongs, with the city, the state, and the military. Thank you. Sorry, big ask.
Of Councilmember?
Of Councilmember Matt Wire. Thank you. Okay, are we, oh, June?
Actually, this would be for both Matt Wire and actually Donovan De La Cruz. So I don't know if David is listening right now. Oh. Oh, okay. But maybe get the, at least, maybe we can see what we can do to get the ball rolling. So it looks like the pedestrian bridge is going to go up, correct? The major concern, no, you're not listening, let me finish. The major concern of everybody in Whitmore seems to be with security, and this is where the city. If the major concern of most of the citizens were security, where they say the pedestrian bridge would, would actually be hurtful to security of the area. And Donovan De La Cruz has also said that maybe the emphasis should be on security as opposed to opposing the pedestrian bridge. Maybe the city and the state needs to get together and find some solutions to the security of the area to alleviate the residents' concern. Because I would say, of all the people that oppose it, I would say, I would say a good ninety percent of it was because of the security of the area rather than anything else, rather than an actual opposition to the bridge itself, or, or the path itself, but actually to the security. So maybe it's time where we look at the security of the area somehow. And when I've heard Donovan give speeches, and so I don't know if his rep is listening, where he said that we should be looking at that, too. So now's the time that we should be looking at it before it gets finished. That's all I'm saying. And it will take a city and state effort, not just.
But if it's a state bridge, shouldn't, shouldn't the sheriffs?
What, what's that?
If it's a state bridge, shouldn't the sheriffs take?
Well, it's not just going to be, because if we just, just secure the bridge, what about the paths coming up to the bridge itself? Yeah. So it would be both concern.
So.
Yeah, I'm talking about safety, basically.
I'll just dovetail off of you, June, and then I'll be real brief, because we are, everyone, we're at nine-thirty, we've got lots, so we gotta.
No, I'm done, actually.
But, no, you're fine, June. I just want to dovetail off of that, because when we had those meetings, we had called special meetings, one in Whitmore and here, at both meetings, there were, you know, like roughly about, it was like a hundred people or plus. But you're right, security and safety was, you know, were issues at that. And, and it, but the thing was, we weren't talking only about at night. It was twenty-four seven, because the thought was, that, that, yeah, but the thought was that because of that, no, the, this, the width, not width, the length, the span of the bridge, and for those who will be walking, the thought was, there'll be people who will be hanging out on the bridge and will take your money, and yeah. And, and so it wasn't just, it wasn't just to have security there, it was, they didn't, people were like, I'm not going to walk across the bridge. You know, there was this fear, this concern of being threatened on the bridge, give me your money, or give me your groceries or whatnot. And, and so it, it was just, their whole livelihood was, would be of concern. That was, so it was not just security in a, in a finite way, it's security and safety of, and, you know, of their, of their home area, you know? And so anyway, I just want to add to that, but, but, you know.
Well, that's why I bring it up now, because if it's going to be up in so much time, we got to look at this now. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, thank you for that. I agree with you on that. Thank you. Okay, we are at nine-thirty. Any other questions on this section? If not, we're going to move on to our new governor's representative.
What, the comment manager?
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, well, I asked of the mayor's rep regarding creating some type of license tag for the off-road vehicles. Yeah. And that's also for our rep and our senator to look into, because that would be good for them. That's another money-making project for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. And if everyone, I know it's nine-thirty, and I apologize to introduce you at this late hour, but if we can welcome Governor Green's representative to our Neighborhood Board, Rosemarie Bernardo.
Hey.
Oh, yes. Rosemarie Bernardo, representing the governor's office. I'll just keep it real brief because of the time. You know, the governor delivered his second State of the State address, as everyone knows, where he touched heavily on the recovery efforts on Maui, of course. And also, he touched on many other key initiatives. And also, he touched on many other key initiatives, including homelessness, where he touched on the construction of Koholai villages in the coming years, also healthcare, education, and the Red Hill, the defueling efforts there. So I'll leave it at that, and if anyone has any questions for me, please let me know, and I'll work on getting responses for them.
Okay, board members, any questions?
I have a question about the process. So when you hear community concerns at our meeting, not just the ones like directly at you, but in general, how do you communicate them back? Like tomorrow, are you gonna sit down with him and talk about what was said at our meetings?
Well, to be candid, this is my first meeting. I apologize for giving my ignorance, I'm learning the process. But I'm here to learn, and questions, I will find out who, which department or which office that issue is for, and I can communicate that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for being here, I hope you come in person too, I think it helps to actually have them physically represented too.
Yeah. So, on that note, then, I will give you your first question.
Okay.
So the question, I think you just heard us having a discussion on the Wahe'aua-Whitmore Village pedestrian bridge, or, you know, so perhaps, although I have been talking to DOT as well, but perhaps you can contact DOT to find out the status of if this project is moving forward, and if it is, what are the plans to communicate with our community, both Wahe'aua and Whitmore? If they are gonna move forward, can I schedule them for our upcoming meeting in February or March to update the community? And I think that would just give us a good start. And it's just a simple one for you to start off with.
Thank you, I'll get on that.
Appreciate that, and then can you tell us what department you, you're from?
Yes, Corrections and Rehabilitation, formerly the Public Safety Department.
Okay, oh, so I just will let you know that we recently, last year, we had a couple of presentations on the Ke'oni Highway House, Security House.
It's actually the Ke'ona Reentry Center, and it's not at the state level, it's at the federal level.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, that's right, I apologize, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I just had a couple of things, so I wanted to ask two things. If I'm not mistaken, I heard that the governor made a claim that the teacher, the teacher shortage was being reduced by fifty percent. Can you bring us back some information about how he came to that? Because, because I wanna know. No, but, you know, we wanna know, how is he, if it is reduced, if he did reduce it, or is gonna reduce it by fifty percent, how is he doing that? But also, I just wanted to talk about the pedestrian bridge real quick. So I have been in touch with Fawn Yamada and Andy Hirano at DOT, and Andy is actually the project engineer. I could be mistaken, he might be the project manager for this particular job. And yes, I did reach out to them and ask if they could make a presentation at our February meeting. So I've asked Chair Ishikawa to, if there is space on our agenda to include them in February. But the pedestrian bridge, as far as I know, the RFP, one part of the RFP was released in July of last year, and the second piece was actually awarded in October of last year. So as far as on the books and what the contract says, it looks like the pedestrian bridge is moving forward. So I think at this point, it's also very, very important that the governor and those that are out there, especially at DOT, that they come to the community meetings, and if they have to host a separate community meeting, to let us know what is going on. Because there are contractual obligations under the RFP that dictate what they have to do, how they have to communicate that information to the general public, not just our community, but more so to our community, because that pedestrian bridge is gonna happen in our community. So if you could come back with some information, that would be great, we would appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
And then, if you could, this is gonna go to DOT. If you could ask when, if possible, we, H-two, both North and South, could get some electronic advisory boards put up? You know, being out in the middle of nowhere, we don't know what's going on in H-one until, and we're hitting stop signs, you know, bad, bad traffic. I think if we could get some advisory, electronic advisories, message boards up by Milli Lander, our Pineapple Overpass, as we're going southbound, we can divert to Kamame Highway, if need be, okay, or other alternate routes, thank you.
Thank you, Dean, any other questions for Governor's Office? Virtually any questions for Governor's Office? Okay, thank you very much, nice to meet you, Rosemary.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, again, really tight schedule at this point, is Senator De La Cruz's representative here?
Hi, yes.
Hi.
Okay, hi, everyone, I'm gonna try and keep this short for the time. Please let me know if they do cut out. So I am Allie Magella from Senator Donovan De La Cruz's office. So first off, Senator De La Cruz will serve again as the Chair of the Senate Committee of Ways and Means. And we kinda want to draw to the attention of the Royal Palm Drive treatment. And so the Department of Agriculture and Honolulu City and County Parks and Recreation have been in discussions about the treatment of the Royal Palm Drive located in the Wahe'aua area. And so the CRB response team has been advising with the ongoing problem in the area already. And so we found that, or they found that that treatment was necessary because the area consists of residential properties and because of the nature of the area, as well as the history of trees. As of right now, the treatment being used was Evergreen and One Guard. And research, research has been ongoing about the effectiveness of Evergreen pesticides in trial. We consider that, they consider that the first option because of the private residential area. And so, on the sixteenth of January, City and County Parks and Recreation crews started that treatment, a total of seventeen Royal Palm trees were treated on the first day. Crews used a gallon backpack sprayer, applying sixty-four ounces of pesticide per tree. And then crews also applied fertilizer to the trunks of the trees as well. On the seventeenth of this month, treatment continued, crews started application with One Guard. No beetles were detected on the ground or surrounding area on the first day of treatment. And then on the eighteenth and nineteenth of this month, a total of eighty Royal Palm trees were treated with the combination of Evergreen and One Guard pesticides. And then during the work period from CRB response team, they provide outreach material and advice resistance on the mitigation going on. In regard to any other concerns or questions, I have noted down the pedestrian bridge and the DOH on the abandoned buildings, as well as the license tag for the off-road vehicles. Unfortunately, I am unable to provide any information or feedback on anything going on tonight, as it is my first time here as well. But any questions or concerns will be given back to the Senator and the Senator's staff.
Well, thank you so much for being with us at this late hour, and welcome, so we're looking forward to working with you, thank you. Board members, any questions? And again, please keep it brief, we have stuff to do.
Hi, this is Jun Yamoro again. I just wanna make sure that you convey that to the senator about the pedestrian bridge's safety, security concerns, because he did say that he wanted to work on that, so he has mentioned it in the past, but he didn't come up with any specifics, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, any other, go ahead.
Thank you for joining us. I just had a question about the trees on Royal Palm Drive. Is it normally the state that maintains those trees? And then why is the City Parks and Recreation Department doing the maintenance or the treatment of the CRBs?
Again, I'm not allowed to answer any questions at this moment, but I will direct your questions to the Senator, as well as the staff working on the.
These questions were meant for you to take them back and bring answers to the next board meeting, because I don't remember the city and county ever having to maintain the trees on Royal Palm Drive. You know, when the branches need to be cut, or when they actually fall and almost hit my car. It's not usually the state that goes out to maintain it. So if you could ask and then bring the questions back. And also, if you could also chat with him about five-to-five avocado, to find out what the status of the state securing that property for whatever division or department may be needing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board, oh, no. Any questions from the community? Or Senator De La Cruz's office? Any questions virtually? Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for hanging out with us so late. Okay, and now we have Representative Pruso, thank you for being here.
My pleasure, aloha, Chair and board members. So I realize that I am the last one, and I'm between, standing between you and a good night's sleep. But I'll just share briefly that we are starting session, we've already had opening day, and tomorrow is the filing deadline for all of our bills. Again, chairing higher education and technology, and really grateful, again, to have the staff that I'm working with, they've been working very diligently, and this week in particular is gonna be long days. So I told them to go home long ago, and they refused, so I don't know why. But I wanted to share, everybody in Central and Upper Wahe'aua should have received one of these two cards. We've knocked on almost every single door in those areas. And essentially, these are maps of how we're organizing down to the neighborhood level. So we've identified neighborhood captains, and we have many volunteers on this neighborhood board who are participating and supporting the work. And these neighborhood captains will be supplied with walkie-talkies and connected to our ham radio operators, so that we have a secondary backup system of communication should cell towers malfunction or electrical lines come down. So that's one initiative that we've been working on over the interim. And I would say now our focus is really on session, so the focus with the selection of the new UH president, we're gonna be digging into how to make that process more democratic, there are some concerns from student, faculty, and staff. And we're also working with the graduate students on their efforts to organize and unionize. And besides that, we have a lot of work to do around UH, because of what happened last session. So we look forward to restoring full funding for the university and supporting, especially our local students who attend and participate in our university's system, and bringing them into the work we're trying to do around economic diversification in the state. So I'm available for questions and happy to be here this evening.
Board members, any questions?
I'm sorry, rep, the card that you're talking to, and I'm sorry, what is that called, what project is that again? Is this the?
This is essentially our HARP program, so we, even before COVID started, we had started a Boy Hazard Awareness and Resilience Program. And that team is further developing and organizing to move down into the neighborhood level.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Questions from the community? Questions virtually? Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative, have a good session, fight for us. Yeah, thank you. Okay, board members, we are, it's at nine forty-six, we probably have just five minutes to do board business. Do have an approval for the November twentieth minutes.
I make a motion that we, we had some edits for the November minutes. How do I say, I make a motion to accept the minutes with edits?
You can do that, yeah, we did submit some revisions, yes. Okay, is there a second? Okay, yep.
Would those edits include the language already written, specifically some of those points? You know?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, those.
That's, that's what you're.
Yes, I would make a motion that we review and accept the edits that were submitted for the November twenty-twenty-three meeting.
And to include a correction on these, because that wasn't part of the, yeah, yeah, right. Okay.
A second, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I. Yep, okay, all right, very good, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, let's see, can we get on to one more thing? What time is it? Nine forty-seven, we gotta, can we do one more thing, or? Okay, real quick, any disclosures by board members? Yes, June? Okay, thank you, that was you and TJ.
June.
Sorry, I just wanted to disclose that we did attend the hearing, the state hearing on the Federal Highway House.
And actually, that was a hearing that was held by the city and county of Honolulu's Department of Planning and Permitting for the Ke'ona Reentry Center.
Yeah. Any report on that, when you were there, anything interesting?
And actually, we did have some good feedback, and we actually did have a couple residents who came and said that they were opposed to it when they came, but after listening to the presentation that was made, they were actually behind it. I have not yet heard that DPP has approved or denied their cup, but I do know that I think the extension, the deadline was January fifteenth, and they were granted an extension to the end of the month to come up with their decision. So it was really good.
Okay, thank you very much, June, any comment on that?
Basically, the reason why they changed their mind was because all the opposition agreed that that was a poor site, that there was a need for such a facility in Hawaii, but the site. And when the federal side gave their case, they said that they could help the community in other areas, and I recommended that maybe they look to enhancing the law enforcement in the Wahe'aua area, because they got federal dollars to support that.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and I also wanted to point out that our Senator Hirano in DC, earlier in, I think it was August or September of twenty-twenty-three, actually did call out Colette Peters, who is the Federal Bureau of Prisons Director, because words, I mean, promises had been made three or four years ago that they would be working to replace or to have a new federal reentry center here in Hawaii, since TJ Mahoney's place had been shut down in twenty-nineteen. And it wasn't shut down because there was a negative or anything like that, it was shut down because the state wanted the property back. So we did actually, we've been keeping Senator Hirano's office updated, anyway, I have keeping Senator Hirano's office here in Honolulu updated as to the progress, because it is a very needed project in our community. And what the federal reentry center is, it serves in some ways similar to what Laumaka. And what the federal reentry center is, it serves in some ways similar to what Laumaka does here on Dillingham. So when someone who is incarcerated has a short amount of time before they are actually released, our residents that are on the continent at a federal prison, they do not have that support system here in Hawaii. They are directed to other states, so they're not able to reconnect with their community, they're not able to reconnect with their families, but most of all, they're not able to reconnect with their culture, which, as you all know, is paramount as a citizen in Hawaii. So it was really good, really informative. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. And a lot of that stuff was when they were here, they gave that information, which was good for us to understand the background of it when they came by. So the two presentations they did were informative, and they did emphasize at that time that Congresswoman Meziroh Hirano was a big supporter of it. So at this point, everybody, ladies and gentlemen, it is 9:52, we're gonna call it a wrap for tonight, because we still gotta get out of here by 10 o'clock. So a meeting is adjourned. See you in February. And again, it'll be the fourth Monday of February due to the holiday.